Let's call a meeting to order, please. Um, Joe said he'd be along, so I'm sure he'll be here in a few minutes. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Oh, let's see, I wasn't here. So you were here on the twenty eighth, so there was some question as to what you said about having the town engineer comment on getting a second engineer. Okay, so that is, it's all, that's on page five. Item five, paragraph three, highlighted in yellow.
Can we just include, insert the word not after should? Also, they, they shouldn't bite to say they should not invite.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, if there's no other.
Anyone? So Steve made the motion to close public comment.
I think.
Let's just cross out, I think, and leave Steve's name there.
And I shouldn't say, say motion to, motion to close public comment. I don't think you need for public comment in there.
Close.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the August twenty eighth minutes with those two changes. Second?
Paul, all right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Cal, I'm abstaining because I wasn't here. Okay, oh yeah, let's do September, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four minutes. Does anyone have any questions, comments or corrections?
On page three. And I can't read.
The lines.
The line numbers, um, but it's the first bullet point.
Before the discussion began?
Yeah. We've read down to that the paragraph, the sentence that says regardless of that conversation. I want, I'd like to just modify that to say regards to that conversation and miscommunication occurred, which resulted in, and then insert rate for requiring the applicant to include, then go back to the ski trail easements. Cross out being included, and then write on, on the plan, after the planning board had decided this ski trails wouldn't be. So the new sentence will say regardless of that conversation and miscommunication occurred, which resulted in Ray Corver requiring the app again to include the ski trail easements on the plan.
So. Are ski trail easements on the record? Are ski trail easements on the recorded plan or not?
Yes, they were, but after the meeting, they were off the plan.
They're off the plan now?
Right. I'm sorry.
They're not on, okay.
Right, they were on the plan that they brought to that meeting. They agreed to remove them, so they're going to be recorded. Do we have those yet?
Yeah, the report.
Okay.
I saw something in minutes, something that said that they had brought over a set with the easements on it and recorded it.
Right, well, no, because it wasn't signed, so they were.
Well, that's why, that's my point.
Okay, yes.
They recorded.
They went over.
A plan, a plan.
Without a planned board signature.
No, no, it wasn't a planning board plan.
Oh, they record.
Yeah, just, just.
What plan, what plan gets recorded? Is it the HOA document or is it playing part one?
So we're recording the subdivision. Right, that we approved, so that subdivision that we approved doesn't show the ski trail easements on it.
On the subdivision plan?
Right.
What did they record? Those two plans over there that conflict each other, ones from the planning board saying that they're not there, and one from the HOA saying that they are there. I understand that, but I'm just saying, so over at the.
Correct.
Registry, there's a conflicting plan. Who's, how does that work? Does anyone know?
They can record a plan.
Whatever they want.
They have the legal right to record a plan without planning board signature, HOA plan without a planning board signature.
Right, because technically easements don't, easements don't have to come before the planning board.
Right.
Right.
Fun, I just didn't.
Records show that you arrived at six oh five.
Confusing.
All right, if there's no other.
Is there anything else?
Oh.
I make a motion to accept September twenty fifth minutes with that one change.
I'll second it. Oh, I can't, I wasn't there, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
Well, you can still second it. Steve, can you want to second it?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Paul's abstaining, all right. You weren't here? All right, all right, that's right, Paul and Joe both abstained. Everybody else voted in the affirmative, and there were no nays. Right. Proposed purchaser of lots in Lincoln Business Park by David J. Fram. Okay, who's making the presentation for this?
I think, I think, yeah, I'm assuming I am too, so we'll go with that. So we have a purchase and sales agreement from David Fram, um, who's looking to buy two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac sort of opposite each other. His intent is to build a warehouse space with office space. Um, and most likely two warehouse spaces with two office spaces as a duplex on each lot. He is, um, looking to move his business, he's, he does, um, instruction. He's looking to move his business in there and then become a landlord or other businesses who would be looking to move into the business park, being able to position to buy land and build a new building, but would be in a position to pay rent and, um, are in need of a place to work in Lincoln.
So do you have a copy of the purchase and sales?
Uh, we do. Were they not included in the?
No, that's, usually we get that.
What was the, uh?
Sixty eight.
They took the price.
That was the price.
And I think that's the same as the last parcel. Um, close.
It's slightly above the price of the last parcel. Four maybe, six or sixty four. Um. Those were sent out by email, correct? All right, I didn't bring copies. And I guess my question as a selectman is, when the, um, park was being, not built, but being proposed, uh, proposed and discussed and argued over, um, kind of the intent was to have it there to allow businesses who were doing business in Lincoln be able to buy a lot and build a, build a place to work, which is exactly what happened with Sullivan, which is exactly what happened with O'Connell. This is a little bit different, um, in that we have one local business person buying a lot in the, in the business park, or buying two lots, proposing to buy two lots in the business park. He's looking to set up his business, but then become a landlord for two or three other businesses who would be working out of the business box.
So he's going to use, one of the buildings is going to take one office and a warehouse.
He's going to take one office and warehouse.
The other building is completely rented.
So you're saying he's a local person, but it says he's from Salem, New Hampshire.
He is working locally. And I know, um.
Not that it matters, I'm saying.
No, but he's doing work locally and Jack, um, Daley at the selectmen's meeting knows him, and I guess he's done, um, quite a bit of work down at the new, uh, the VRS, uh, project, uh, he came in and I guess bought his equipment in and did a whole roof and then did another one and has done, you know, a fair amount of work down there, uh, free of charge with him and his crew and his equipment. Um, but he's doing other construction in the Lincoln Woodstock area, so he has a, he has a crew, he has equipment, and he has projects up in this area. Lives in, I think it was.
Salem.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Salem, New Hampshire.
New Hampshire, Southern New Hampshire.
North Salem, New Hampshire.
So, um, so, so.
I think it's great.
That's, that's kind of the question, we just want to make sure that, that, and again, we have to go, the board of selectmen have to have two public hearings on the, on the proposed sale anyway. We just wanted to make sure the planning board was comfortable with a landlord tenant type situation versus an owner occupied situation.
Are there any restrictions as to hours that could be worked over there? Because I know it abuts a per, a residential property. I don't know if there are any restrictions on hours that could be, you know, that it.
There's.
Hours of operation.
There's, there's none in the, in the, um, deed restrictions that would only come up at, uh, planning board, in site plan review, like we're going to look at tonight as far as hours of operation. Um, that would be a planning board.
So, and he, he would still have to come in. That, and, and, and up butters would be notified, so they would have an opportunity to express their concerns at that time.
Right.
Okay, I find way as long as they have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, um, is there going to be any kind of appraisal to determine good value for the land?
There is not, that, oh, I should say there is, but the board of selectmen aren't intending to do that, whereas we had a recent sale.
No, that's fine, I'm just, I thought I'd ask a question. All right.
How many lots are left over there? After these sales, you know?
I don't know.
He's full of information.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Oh.
Yeah, and you're taking the public comment. We don't have to take.
Yeah, we have two scheduled, yeah, public hearings.
One, two, one, two. Three, four, five. Is this a lot right back here? Six. So five or six left.
Yeah, right, but I mean, as far as for the plan board, we don't have to take any public comment.
It's five or six.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions on this? All right, is there a motion to recommend the sale?
I'll make a motion.
All right, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
I'm abstaining because.
Okay, so four yeas, one abstention. No nays. Okay, well, he's not seated.
Okay. So where is?
Okay. Great. Site plan review. Christopher Lino, DBA Bear Mountain Properties LLC, and Anthony Moore, tenant, twenty-four seven fitness center. Oh, sorry, so Aaron Moore, just introduce yourself, go ahead.
Now, I do a bit of cleanup in fact, more.
For, um.
This gentleman right here.
Okay.
I want to make sure everybody knows that part of that. I've got affiliation with them whatsoever, I said this.
Okay.
So anybody here thinking of being a conflict?
You're just taking money from me.
Just, you know, I ended up paying. Okay, so potential conflict, so you're asking for a non-binding opinion from the board. I, I don't think it's a conflict, does anyone else have any comments?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Aaron Moore, uh, because he's a little bit, uh, if, uh, whether in, I would like it to be a full of twenty-four hour days.
So this is, um, so all the butters have been notified?
Okay.
So who gets, who gets notified when, when, who's the owner of? I guess I would.
Those are all condos over there.
Well, there's only two, right, that are occupied there, who rents their tenants there?
Yeah.
So only the, excuse me, only the owner of the property gets notified, not the tenants?
Right, because they don't.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking a question. So if any of the tenants have a problem, they have to go to the owner.
Right.
So above me there, uh, cold storage. Then there's two businesses next door, and I don't believe even next door, either one of those is residence again.
I think there's one on each end, I don't think there's one.
On the side of, or above.
Okay, just going in with a purple tomato was?
Two doors down.
Two doors down, okay.
Outdoor outfit is right there.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, on the rebuttal list, Carol, Michael J. Bush is highlighted in yellow twice.
Just wanted to distinguish him, the person Lino owns both.
Right.
Copy of the application.
Application is right there.
Because we, we have copied the application and packets?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have it electronically.
What?
I said she sent that out electronically.
Oh, I didn't get, I didn't have a hard copy, and if it's lots.
One if you want it.
Well, that's fine, as long as you have one, you can read it off, that's fine.
So does anyone have any questions right off? Sir, motion open public comment.
Do we accept the application as complete first, or can you?
Well, you should take comment first, but I, we can accept the applications.
Whatever you want to.
Why don't I run through the checklist then?
Here's the application, there's the picture, and here's the map.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I'm fine, I just wanted to make sure that we had an application, that's all.
All right. Um, scale not less than one inch. Um, per forty feet, not applicable, three copies of blue or black line prints, not applicable, digital copy of the print, not applicable. Date title, North Arrow and Scale, not applicable, name, hat, and address of the owner and applicant provided, name and address of the licensed land surveyor, not applicable. An accurate plan of the site showing existing natural features, including watercourses and water bodies, various types of vegetation, topographical features, and any other features which should be considered in the site design process, not applicable. Type, extent, and location of existing and proposed landscape in an open space areas indicating what existing landscape and open space areas will be retained, not applicable. Existing and proposed topography of the site at two-foot contour intervals, not applicable, soil mapping units and unit boundaries, not applicable, flood, floodplain identification areas, not applicable. Location of all buildings within fifty feet of the site and the location of all intersection roads or driveways and utilities, water, sewer, electrical cable, or telephone within two hundred feet, not applicable. Location of all building setbacks required by the land use plan, when it's not applicable, the location of district boundaries, including wetlands, not applicable. Lot area, street frontage, and the requirements for minimum lot size is not applicable. Uh, location of off-street parking and loading spaces with a layout of the parking indicated, so is your question a waiver on that?
Does he need?
That's a question I had.
Yep. I don't believe we've had any trouble with parking at that project.
Well, so I was wondering, it, it, there's a square foot requirement, right, so it must be.
This, the square footage isn't changing, so I would think that it's not applicable for him to, because no matter what he does, no matter what anyone does with that space.
It's got so many people.
So long as it stays a retail, consumer-based retail space, my parking is what it is.
So the retail is based on the square footage?
Right, so I mean, I guess it's still, retail use, I think the concern here is it's becoming a twenty-four seven operation or so, and anything else.
Okay.
Well, retail is, retail is based on square footage, right, parking, so it's not changing the square footage, like I'll say.
Right.
Like OJ said, so.
Unless, unless he's operating, operating, offering memberships for a dollar a month, I don't think he's going to have a, kind of traffic.
But you can't put so many people in anyway.
Yeah, he's going to. Yeah, so. Okay. Okay, so why don't we change that to not applicable? Location with curving and type of access ways and egress ways, not applicable, location of all existing and proposed deed restrictions, covenants, et cetera, not applicable. Surveyed property lines showing their deflection angles, distances, radius, radius length of ax, control angles along property lines and monument locations and names of all butters, not applicable.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
The deed restrictions, do we know? Are there any for that piece? Do you have any deed restrictions in there from the owner?
If the development is a subdivision, then lines and names of all proposed streets, lands, and ways of easements intended to be dedicated for public use, all subdivision regulations shall apply, not applicable. Plan views of all buildings either existing or proposed with a use size, location, and floor elevations indicated, provided. A typical elevation view of all existing and proposed buildings indicating their height and signing, not applicable. The type and location of solid waste disposal facility is not applicable, the location, size, and design, proposed signs and other advertising or instructional devices, provided. Um, stormwater drainage plan, that's not applicable. The size and proposed location of water supply and storage facilities and provision for future expansion of storage and water facilities, not applicable. The size and location of existing and proposed public and private utility connections, including provisions for fire protection, not applicable. Location and type of all existing and proposed lighting for all outdoor facilities, not applicable. Copies of all applications submitted for applicable state approvals and permits, not applicable, performance guarantee of bond, not applicable. Illustration of effect on pedestrian or automated circulation, not applicable, illustration of fencing walls and buffers, not applicable. If waivers for non-compliance to DOT construction specification for roads, parking, streets, drainage, and bridges will be required, not applicable. Okay, does anybody have any questions on the applications complete?
Yeah, one, one question, your application shows the two signs, I think it is from, um, Hemmy River Outfitters. Are you obviously going to change this, the signage, but you're using the same size and same location of signs?
So I think the sign is, so I still need to apply for a sign. But the size of the sign is going to increase, but it's going to be within, uh, specified limits. I think it looks about like a, I think the sign limits are a hundred and fifty square feet. Something like that, from what I.
That's big for that lot.
What's that? Sign is going to be bigger than what was there, but it is going to be in limits.
There's also a percentage, I believe, my correct, can be corrected.
Yeah.
Of a percentage of the wall, not the overall hundred and fifty feet. You can observe a percentage, you can't make a hundred and fifty feet.
But is it going to be on that, um, facial board over the door?
Facial board, and then there's going to be one small one on, uh, like on the Lingwood Plaza sign itself.
Oh, on, oh, towards the road, okay.
Carol, are you looking up the sign now?
And adjustments can be made to that.
Okay. Want to say something?
There's one thing we got to check on, that you got to be up for twenty-four hours a day, theoretically. Goes well, hopefully it does. We got to discuss the lighting in the parking lot, how it will affect the tenant and the people in the street.
Okay.
Because right now, the original design closed at seven o'clock at night, but the lights be on all night long, to make sure it's applicable. That can be determined by the planning board, he comes in for his final.
It's here now.
He's there now.
I'm just making a suggestion.
Oh, that's fine.
We get to discuss it.
That's a good.
At least he knows the question he's got to do, that is after the fact, what if, what if, or, you know what I'm saying?
Is there, is there lighting on any of those signs there now?
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
Aaron, do you have your microphone, one can hear, I guess, what you're saying.
No, no, you gotta, yeah, you gotta put the best.
This is a do-it-yourself type, uh.
We're very informal here.
There you go, yeah, you're right.
Where were we?
What the lighting? What was there now?
Um, yeah, I think there are a couple other businesses, I know the Abbey Two store, they have a full light sign. Um, I don't know how many hours of the day that it's on or not.
Call the sign.
Turned on at night. But there are, so I don't think, yeah, I don't think the signs are turned on, but I know a few businesses leave their sidewalk lights on, which is kind of.
It looks like they're down, they're down light.
Yes.
But I mean, they must have.
Bloodlights.
They must have lighting at night for the tenants.
There is, there is.
Probably be a good thing for parking people, they'd have those lights on. Safety.
Okay.
And there aren't any tenants directly above or residential tenants above or beside me, so it shouldn't affect anybody.
My basic concern was, people coming in parking, parking lot, like, Doc, there's some kind of light for them to see where they're going.
Oh, yeah, 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 so there's, there's sidewalk lighting, um, throughout the, yeah, in front of the whole place, and there's also lighting next to the, uh, the shrubs and everything, so it should be. But across, across the parking lot, I don't think there is anything, but the streetlight should take care of that.
Good, all right. No one else has any questions, I'll take Steve.
I'm good.
Okay, motion open public comment.
So moved.
All in favor? Public comment is now open. Are there any butters that wish to speak on this? Is there a motion to close public comment?
So we have, we have any letters?
Not that I know of.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, public comment's now closed. All right, do we have any other questions before we make a decision?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Right.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Awesome, thank you very much, guys, appreciate it. Thank you.
What are you doing? Oscar? Uh, he's, he's a mess right now, he's a. Uh, he's, he's a mess right now. He's alone at home. He's probably barking his head off. How's my buddy doing? How's Jeff?
I'm doing better. Back to work in a couple of weeks.
Good, good.
I talked to him yesterday. Bored out of his mind. He's off the crutch, he's got, got a brace on his ankle.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Say, have a good night.
Let me know.
Anyone here for Jared Ham?
Not a word.
I'll make a motion, move, move over. Uh, yes, you don't have to move.
We're just moving on if he shows up, if he shows up. Um, inquiry, got an mural signage.
We're both gonna talk, should I? I can answer.
My name is Kim Bakerine. I'm the executive director of the Western Way Mountains Chamber of Commerce. I put together some information about why we're here and what our kind of goals are. Um, so every year, the chamber sets aside funds uh, for community enhancement projects and wants to bring that sense of community, community, recreation opportunities, bringing in arts and culture pieces to the communities, both Lincoln and Woodstock. Um, we have donated over fifteen thousand dollars already with these funds, ten thousand dollars to the skate park um, and five thousand dollars to a fountain project happening over in Woodstock. And the next step was, um, having some conversations with just some of our community members and wanting to bring some art pieces into the community, get people to walk around, linger, make it a reason why they're coming here, uh, and then take photos and share those and create that sense of community. So I just put some, together some really overview information here about how public art and public music really increases people's quality of life and travelers as well. Um, something I have noted, I volunteer down at Jean's Playhouse as well with the completion of the second phase of the Riverwalk Resort. There are a lot more people walking around, uh, what I call the village core area. Um, so it's nice to see people taking the time, visiting areas and just traveling by foot. Um, we then had some conversations, and this is where it started with, um, Longfellow and the village shop owners over there. And they offered up a, a wall for us to do something with. Um, and so we just started the whole process of moving forward with finding a plan of what could work for us. Um, and then as we got down the road and we got some of these proposals, which I have included some of the artwork that was, um, given to us. We set the tone as to what we wanted for, uh, what we were looking for, that history piece, that tie of logging in the area for Lincoln. Um, and then more conversations started to happen, and then we're like, I think we need to think about, is this a sign? Um, and so we kind of went back and forth. Obviously, I view it as public art. Um, and then, you know, we are well aware of what has been happening over in North Conway as well, um, with the whole, uh, Levitt Bakery over there as well. So we're here just to figure out what, how does this fall into the sign plan? How can we move forward with something like this? Um, I noted the village shops, but there are other locations in the community. Um, and we have other community partners willing to work with us to bring more. And it's not just murals, we're also thinking about, um, music, uh, installations as well, interactive chimes, drums, kind of like there, there's a Riverwalk, um, up in Littleton. Uh, and then bringing in art sculptures too. Um, so really creating that kind of art community piece. Um, and then I have a project working with Carol, which would probably fall into this as well with the signs over at the Upper Pemmy, um, Historical Society. We want to create a history walk in town. There's so much history, there's so many different things, and every time I talk to Carol, I learn something different about this community. And that's something that they would take on and put together in their website, but, you know, putting in little markers that would have a QR code that would direct the people to the website to learn more about our history. So that also, you know, after thinking about mural signage, I thought about, oh, this other project that we would really like to help with. Um, so that's where I just wanted to start the conversation and see which direction and what we need to do.
I mean, are these already proposed to go out, but these are just conceptuals?
Um, these are conceptuals. We did put together an RFP for this project, um, that we wanted to do. The folks over at Longfellow and South Peak are very interested in having this done. Um, and this is a program that we are paying for, is the chamber. It's not an individual business that won't have any individual business names or stuff on that. Um, but yeah, this is a project that we are looking to do this spring. Cause they're working on renovations and up, um, they have a couple of things to fix on that backside for us.
Any day.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they have some great pieces over there. Yeah, there's a bunch in Bethlehem, and there's actually a group called, uh, No Com Murals. And they do temporary ones that are, uh, put in different places throughout the summertime. And they rotate through, so it's been a great thing. Uh, Bethlehem has a couple of them, and people really take photos in front of it, tag Bethlehem, it make on that, on that scene, but you know, you walk by, you're like, oh yeah, this is cool, let me take a photo and, and create those kind of memories as well. They, Clark's Trading Post. Clark's Trading Post is ho- having those right now. No, the, the big, big ones that were in the wall are both at Clark's. Yeah, they're housing them for the historical society, because they didn't have space in their, in their building.
You want to have any thoughts?
Putting bureaus all over town, is that the track, the town being an old mill town? After the history of the town, let me finish, please.
Yep.
As opposed to be a no orchard beach type scenario, which we've been trying to get away from for years, keep away from it. This has been, oh, I look at the top of years. As the town is reading, I, I don't, except for them, I'm just trying to point it out. Years of town trying to get away from all these F back, stuff all over town, enough to be a.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, that, um, we do not want to be old Orchard Beach. We do not want that image of our area here. And these are all just a very initial concepts by five different artists and graphic designers. Um, they are willing to work with us on a lot of this stuff. We sat down, we've created a, a committee. Um, and anyone is welcome to join that committee at the chamber to take part of this. We've walked through town and we've looked at like, oh, we really like this, but do the colors work? And we want to be very strategic about what we put where. We're not gonna put every building, every bulletin, you know, board, art pieces, art pieces, I don't want to do it just to do it. Um, but you know, we even thought, even with that village shops piece in the back, like, we really should make it more historical about the mill and logging and being intentional with, how does this look compared to the next one that we have planned that people can walk to, to the next one? So they don't necessarily fight each other, but they kind of complement each other. Um, and then like at Settlers Green over there, they have a whole wall with where to find all their different art in the community. It, it's initial.
Doesn't look historical past to me, what you present and so forth. But it can change when you make the presentation.
Correct, and these were initial, and it was to showcase our outdoor recreation, our quality of life and historical ties. So some of them do have, you'll see some logging and things in that, but that showcases foliage, skiing, Clark's hiking, that type of stuff.
These be painted on a building, they'll put it on like a mural stretched out.
Oh no, they would be painted on the buildings. That's the initial thought of, especially that first, that brick wall that we're looking to do first. There are some other locations, and that each could be a different platform that they're done, but I, I would be, I don't want to be making banners and putting them on.
You'll kill. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Ride the wood for the, to your project.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, who's gonna maintain these once they're up?
Um, the artist will be giving us some maintenance plan through that, and we will work with whatever building owner to make sure they're maintained and they won't fall by the wayside.
They'll last ten years, twenty years. I mean, are they gonna just stay there until? I mean, they're gonna stay there based until they're not functional anymore.
Uh, probably. Uh, uh, you know, I don't, we haven't gotten that far down with that whole full maintenance plan, and that's a working agreement that we would have with whatever building owner that we're working with for those pro- pieces.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, but I think we have to, not everybody's idea of art or sculptures or stuff are all gonna be the same. But I think we have to be careful, mindful to not make it a sign that advertises something, because once it becomes a sign that advertises something like, well, a Clark's or a little mountain, or it shows something that is a business, it then becomes an issue for someone who has a business and says, oh, all we gotta do is get a mural, we can put something up on it.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, while it's, it's nice, I think murals are nice, I think, I think would enhance town a little bit. The colors will be good, but I think there needs to be some sort of regulation that says it can't have any, I think it needs to be regulated in, in a small way that says, can't have this or can't have that. And that, it, it needs to be like your comment, there needs to be a maintenance plan submitted or things like that, so I think so, so that everybody is, at least knows what the the rules are when it comes to having it, you know, not that it's a bad thing or a good thing, it, but here's the rules, you know, it can't be any bigger than sizable folk, you know, or something like that, and it can't show any advertisement for a business, or it can't be, I mean, you know, it has to have a maintenance plan, just certain little things that that would just kind of keep everybody, you know, good contracts, make good friends. You know, so as long as, as long as it's spelt out what you could do, I think would be a good thing to have.
Okay, I remember about two years ago, there was a big incident in Littleton. Guys put up murals on the walls, a lot of people took offense to it, you remember? Was in a carrier and a bunch of other things.
The only thing I was thinking of was statues and stuff, you know, the made a sculpture that offended somebody, you know, then it would be. You know, so this is gonna be, I think the murals would be a great place to start and try and develop some re- regulation. Light regulation that says size, uh, maintenance, and that it can't have any advertisement. Those would be three things that I would kind of just.
And, yeah, and to your point on that, um, the town of Conway did implement a public art ordinance after the sign ordinance that was just implemented in April of twenty twenty-four. Um, so they, they addressed that issue because of the signage for the Levitt Bakery. Yeah, no, no, I just, but.
Everyone's comfortable when they say we, we have looked at it, that's what we, planning board does. Regulations, you know.
And to your point that came up in the conversation, we were walking around, are we just putting like a sign up for this business that's here, or, you know, that, so.
See someone who, who, I mean, you put a bear on there, and they're gonna say, oh, yeah, so they're advertising Clark's, won't advertise my business. I mean, I, I could, you could just see.
This is being litigated right now in Conway, but I think all along, we're gonna have an answer to both of your questions.
While we don't, I mean, it shouldn't stop if we think it's, you know, I, I, like I said, I would suggest this is minor.
And I mean, our question was too, when we had, started having these conversations, you know, does this fall into the sign?
Any kind of permit or any kind of limitations on your murals?
That's to draw atta- attention to attract the sign town wick, of course, that town order, which we changed it.
Well, it really doesn't matter what the town ordinance says, it truly is all about what that, I don't know how that. Sign.
That, that only controls.
Content. But I mean, yeah, it'll attract people, but you could paint your, your building bright colors, and that would attract people too.
Right.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, we don't have any ordinances right now about painting a building. You paint it any color you want, or any multiple colors you want, or pink polka dots with red stripes, or whatever you want, you can paint your building. I'm not, I don't object to having some sort of guidelines or regulations, but I don't think we should overstep, and I think that, that I think we're on, the, the discussion right now is becoming, um, too critical, in my opinion. For example, you know, you have some images on here that people may associate with the business. Okay, a black bear, yeah, you think of Clark's, but, but there's thousands of other bears in Lincoln. Aren't it Clark's Trading? Okay. We are a ski top. To, to put a skier and a gondola on there, to me is no different than, than the ice climber and the, the mountain biker. I, I just think that, that, um, in, in my opinion, if, if it's directly advertising something like a donut on top of a donut shop, all right, yeah, it's a piece of art, but it's a sign. If it's a picture of a skier and a mountain biker in a train, in a, in a. What is that advertising? What is that telling you to go do? It's telling you to go enjoy the town of Lincoln, and I don't think that's a sign. So I, I think that we can, we can do regulations, but I would be adverse to having something overly regulatory and overly precise, and you can do this and you can't do this. I think that's where we're then looking at content. I don't even think this is a sign. Any more than what color you paint your house isn't a sign, unless it's advertising a donut shop or some particular business, to me, it's not a sign. Even if the words Lincoln New Hampshire are there, or welcome to, the journey starts now, those aren't advertising anything. Those, those are works of art.
I, I guess the question is now, so every time they do one of these, but we have to, they have to run it by us to make a determination whether it's a sign or a work of art.
I mean, it's interesting, because I I don't totally disagree with OJ, but I disagree with, I think this is gonna open us up to some criticism from other people who have other businesses that don't miss, that aren't necessarily bears or gondolas or skis. They're gonna say, how come I can't have something that big, so. I, I think it's gonna, I think it has a possibility of doing that, and I think, like I said, I, I don't think we need a lot of regulation, but I do think we need something that addresses what it is, how big it is, if it's lit, I mean, we've done that with signs, and, and while I agree these are not signs, I think there's a fine line between what one person's perception of it could be and what it really is. Your perception is that it's not mine. If I see something on there that looks like a, a Loom Mountain gondola or something, me, that's saying, it, it's advertising for a Loom Mountain gondola. You know, because there's only one of those in town. So I, I guess I, I just think we gotta be careful about that, because I, I don't want to sit here and defend. I think having this is great in town. I'm not against any of it. I'm, I just think we gotta be careful about it.
What I'm trying to make, clear phrase, when I, basically when I was trying to say earlier, I'm not totally against it. But what, some of the stuff I've seen literally going on, they get a couple of offices going on, about ten seconds, put on the wall for different people. You might have heard about those in paper.
Oh, yeah.
The same thing happening in Lincoln. People putting their personal beliefs on the wall.
Yeah. Do you, do you want to say something?
I'm just curious, I, I know that, um, I would consider that a sign, but it's awful. And that sign probably, I don't know if it got a.
Predates a sign, wouldn't it?
But that's the type of thing that, that but I don't think.
No, I mean, that's why I said, as long as, because if, if the town allows your group to make murals, and say some other group comes in and wants to make murals, but they're not in that light, say they could be deadheads or something, I don't know, people with skeleton. And that, one, one person of art is different than another person's, you know, that, so, I, I don't want to get into that.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think this is, is, this type of murals are great, but I mean, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so someone else could want something different. And I don't, I, I don't think we're ready to get into that, and we have, we, we can't even enforce our own sign ordinance.
Hey, Mike, did you have something?
Yeah. Seeing the, the murals with, uh, say, the black bears. Okay, they're generic per se. Yeah, you might think clocks, but they're generic. If you look at the eye in Lincoln, now that's a post where the police do stand head clocks, okay? So I would have to say like something like that should not be in there, because now you're putting a place. Okay, that's the only thing that I noticed on that. Again, uh, going again with Paul, something generic, basic stuff, um, historic. Again, uh, going again with Paul, something generic, basic stuff, um, historical. You know, something that just, as we said, is not promoting. Uh, an association with the business that already exists.
You look using that, some of the other. Other camps just have that too.
Yeah, these are all things that go here in the first place.
It's very subjective, I mean.
I think the taste.
Yeah, and these are just initial concepts that we've received from them, and like I said, we. Almost kind of put the cart before the horse, but we really wanted to get moving on this project, um, and I'm now in a place at the chamber where I can do some of these things with my staff. So it's kind of fun uh, to think outside the box, though.
I'm I'm just to make sure I'm. Are you planning to do it like in a certain area of town, a little here, a little there?
I mean, our goal was to kind of start in this kind of village shop central core area here, just because there's a lot of businesses. People are walking around, they can park and enjoy some of these things, they're walking from Riverwalk to the street or from there down to. Jean's Playhouse, so it's kind of that center core to be able to start with a few things, and I say few things, not just few murals like. The other sculptures and sound and that type of stuff, and then work our way through. Yeah. 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 So.
Any other questions? I mean, we need to make a determination.
I'd like to take a look at what Conway's. Regulations were that you said that came out, just to kind of look at them just to see. I mean, if they're.
Those that went to litigation.
We all, we always look at other towns and see what they have, if they have anything like.
Yeah, right now we don't have any.
But I think it would be good to have one as we start going in, at least have a basis.
I just gave Carol, I had a copy of the the public art ordinance that came out of Conway after their sign ordinance and stuff, so show me copies.
And I agree with those, I don't think it needs to be overregulated, but I think. We need a basic place to start, just like we do with all of our regulations, and we change them as time goes on, based on what people come in and say. You know, they might, all people might all of a sudden start coming in and wanting different types of murals or saying, no, how come I can't have sign that big? And then we'll have to kind of adjust to that, but if we start with a basic idea.
Yeah.
Basic. Regulations, if you wanna call them, you know, then that will address at least the maintenance aspect of things like that, then. I think it it gives us a starting point and see what the people, what their. What their taste is for, if they like it, then we don't have to regulate anymore, if they don't like it, I guess what, well.
What is the timeframe to start putting these up?
Um, the first one we want to do is in the spring, uh, you know, so we're it, we have time to work on this, and we wanted to start this conversation of. What needs to happen, I'm happy to help. Work this and help you guys with this as well in terms of how, what you, what I think is art in different, how. What I've asked for folks, um, when I put these RFPs out, I asked for them to get such a few of insurances, so they would have insurance as well as because. And include us and the building owners and all of that, um, and they would be responsible with timelines, everything, so I have a full RFP and then a. An agreement that we would have with them, so that would be covered. Yeah.
I like the color aspect, I don't think the historical part of it showing that.
Even that person putting their personal views. Concepts to get people upset.
Well, that's why you need some sort of.
Well, our our intent is to steer clear of that and create beautiful pieces and scenic things that people would want to do that right.
Someone else to come in, say they're doing this, now we wanna do that.
I I think because of all of this, that it's really important or even imperative that planning board. Look, uh, sketch over or mural over before it actually gets put up. Because this way, if there are any issues, we can bring everything to the forefront before it gets. Put on and cause a stir or what have you.
Would it make any sense to have? Have them come in? Or a public hearing on a mural, just so someone. Had a gender affiliation or someone in the business thought that it was advertising from someone else, at least to come out that that time before you go ahead and. You know, make it, and then someone says, oh, no, and then you're gonna take it down, because I think that that would be terrible, some all that time in something, and then. And and then.
Go back to the Gilbert decision. Gilbert says no. Gilbert says absolutely no, you can't do that, so I I don't know if we wanna.
Swayed into that or not?
Yeah.
But if we had some guidelines, we could steer that direction, because also when I'm asking artists to create these concepts. I don't wanna go to them with like a big red pen and say yes, no, yes, no, and recreate their whole concept, they're artists too, so I.
Really, a giant bagel is not a mural.
Yeah.
That's the way I see it, I don't know.
Hate to see how it all billings put up like it looks like a toilet stall. Some towns have. There's a practice, yeah, well, I look at the town like. Sometimes too much color is worse than not having enough.
Things here that maybe would work. Just looking at it. Glancing at it.
Yeah, and I don't mean to have this done like all today.
Spring, they wanna pay, wanna pay and go further.
Yeah.
Yeah, I look at this, we had the old brick McDonald's in town, in the nineties, they came and spray painted it, it was white, gold and red, and people were up in arms about that. Oh, geez, we gotta do something about it.
Well, they're up in arms with the colors now too, because. And we were never gonna please everybody, and that's what we have to understand, but.
Well. I still say that just the content of the mural should be. That's all.
You know, we can't, we have to be very careful at regulate, we're making comments that regulate content. You know, if you wanna. Bring it by and say, is there anything advertised in the business that's.
I got that in under B three.
Yeah, I mean, so we can review that too, but you know, obviously, what brought us here as well is, you know, where does this fall into? The sign ordinance. And sizing and things like that, so.
It's not, they've they've spent some time on this. Does allow. The artist to be discreetly. Display other um, names or logos. But it can only be two percent of the overall mural, so I mean, maybe that's one way to get by. The way that OJ was talking, you know, it 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 is part of the history, so if you put. Clarkson's Bear up there, it can't be more than. Two percent of the overall mural, you know, or something like that, so they they have thought of that. And they talk about maintenance.
You know, I mean, some some subjective criterion here, ninety eight five D appropriateness. Proposal does not detract from the character of the surrounding area or neighborhood as determined by the planning board, I mean, that's.
But they also talk about having a. Public hearing, which someone can come in and say. I don't like that because.
It is, it is the right of, if it's gonna be public and. Not like someone's business. And it's gonna be a public thing, I think the public should have a right to take a look and have their say if they choose to. At least we give them the opportunity. And if they show they do, if they don't, they don't, but.
Beautiful, beautiful mural. Maybe on on a mainstream and then someone's going by and they're looking at it as they are, they. Don't see the crosswalk light going off and they run somebody, I'm sorry, but I was looking at the mural, you know, I mean, then we're all gonna be.
You know, this thing is hugely. Regulatory for public art, I mean, they. Regulate the artist's qualifications.
Yeah, some of those things, I I agree, don't don't make anything, it'd be nice to. Take some time to look at this, Carol, do you have any other ideas, are there any other ones other than Conway that?
I've never even heard of it.
Can you search out on the planning board, planning site? And just see if there's any.
I'll take a peek too, Carol.
I don't wanna overregulate anything, but I think we have to have a place to start.
Right, and I know now that we've talked about this too, just, you know, even going back. Is it a? Is it a sign? Like, do we have to fall into those categories of things?
Because I, I mean, if you take a look even at Conway, there's. They're distinguishing it from a sign, so they're saying it's not a sign. It's it, it's independent, all of its own, because you have a mural, you have public art and you have a sign. Those are three different categories, none of which are. Intermingled. And they each have their own definition, so.
It's basically, we're gonna do this, and let's put an article in for murals. Over the side owner. The side owner is the way of the present read, that's to drag attention. That's a public draw attention to in a sign.
And there's no reason why we can't do this. And have a. A small start. To be submitted for March meeting, to be voted on and. And at least give it a start and let them get going, so they would have something to go. To get going by.
Definitions of what's a mural, something like that, and you know, one or two small things.
Right, like I said. Maintenance, like you were talking about, you know, I mean, size, then then.
We don't have to put that into town meeting, add it and addendum to time or sign over. They can't legally put it up.
They're not gonna look, they're not looking to do it until April.
I know, but that's what we gotta do in town meeting before in March.
That's what I'm saying. We get done in March, they can start in April, they can do all the preliminary work. And then when it passes town ordinance, March, then you can.
Opportunity to come to hearing if something's proposed, you can comment on it, you can say, well, gee, this will affect us this way or not affect us.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, I don't think there's anyone here that's looking to stop you.
No, and I know, and I'm not taking that at all, I so, yeah, and that was our questions, once we started thinking more about this and meeting and talking to a few more people, it's like. Oh, wait, we should check here, so. Yeah.
In Denver, it's all underground power, and they have those transformers everywhere, you know, they kind of look like crap.
Yep. I would love to.
Paint murals. Yeah, and it's like dolphins jumping out of the ocean and stuff, it's really neat. Just driving down the.
The cell towers look like pine trees, are those?
Part of nature.
Yeah.
Can I suggest that we we. Each maybe review what Conway.
Yeah.
Add to it, delete from it, make changes. Carol, if you find or or Kim, if you find any other ordinances that that we should look at or. If I have some good components to it. Um, send those around. And let's put this on the agenda, like sometime in November, December.
First meeting in November, just so we have time.
I would say the first week in November, I I don't I don't think we wanna. Cycle this thing, I think.
If we do it in November, because then we, if we're gonna propose an ordinance change, we need to.
Right.
Public hearing.
When is the last day for doing?
We should start in February, because you're gonna have to make a recommendation, you're gonna have to. It's very tight, I don't know what it is, I have to look it up every time. Okay.
All right, thank you. Have anything else for us?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Point out, they're not totally against, just wanna have some kind of control.
No, that's totally fine. We get, I get. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
Hey, Jared is here.
Jared, thanks for joining us.
What you guys know.
Not exactly.
I didn't get in quite.
Playing OJs?
You know it.
So anyway, long story short. I don't know what Carol has.
Put a mural on it.
Yeah, there you go. Good idea.
Yeah, it's already like that.
Guys, put track between the two of them. Yeah, there you go, yeah.
What's your presentation?
Yeah, well, it's more conceptual, I guess, but it's basically. I would want to place the caboose on that property that faces Hanson Farm Road. Um, I may not even take the fence, like, I'm not gonna open the fence to the road, so it's kind of. You know, whether that's a factor. You're there. But I would look to put water sewer, make it a functional rental. You know, I don't want something by the law, it's like places thing. As an accessory, I don't know what you'd call it.
It's gonna be a long term rental or just an Airbnb?
I I know, I honestly, I can't into that, I'm not sure.
Let's buy it at the washman.
Yeah. So I guess. In the spirit of time. I'm not looking to divert any of the rules, regulations, but. Time is obviously to move this thing.
Right.
I mean, that's the only. That's the point is. You know. Is there a situation where it could be moved onto the site? And what I choose to do with it later, I. Off of what the board or.
Well, I think the biggest thing is just to see if it'd be a lot of use, and then if it is, then we could do that, go ahead, Joe.
Then it's, to answer his question. He's got a large play of pipe area in Park Bay, but then. We should probably give him a temporary approval to park to move on his property, that time the site is ready. Is that just in the thought?
Yeah, I haven't even thought down, you know. I don't know, I say the only thing I I haven't bought the thing, I'm negotiating something. You know.
Well, the same one I was looking at.
Ask question, and. It will be used as a rental, it's okay on it. I don't wanna make any other. Arrangements that come in offering to me, I've got a business up running, you have separate thing that. And it, you know. I guess. There's my presentation.
Driveway.
So I could either use the access off from. The other lot that I own, which is Marie McLaughlin's old place. Sixty six Hanson Farm Road. Um. Could do a shared driveway situation and just come in and go to the right or. You know, like I said, I don't wanna. I kind of like the fence, and I know neighbors probably like the fence, so I'm not looking to take the fence down and then cause another set of problems. So, you know, that stuff would be. Ashed out later, I guess.
Well, I'm just thinking, yeah, if you wanna hash out later, just wanna make sure it's possible.
It is, I mean, setbacks, no problem. Water, sure, I did have a quick conversation with Nate, just to make sure it is plausible.
Okay. Need to have to issue the driveway permit.
Yeah. So, short term rental would not be added, added, you know, that's even a factor in decision making, but rental for.
I mean, I haven't seen any issue with it, if anyone else has any.
No.
But I was having to. You get plenty of land, it's no different than putting in a motel's property.
He's putting a one unit motel, basically.
I think Bojay can have one, he can. Few houses down.
Yeah.
And it's called the Caboose District.
Want to say something?
I just say, technically, he's looking to put put a dwelling unit. On on an existing commercial property. Um, totally allowed, I mean, there's. You know, as long as setbacks, driveway permit, no obnoxious lighting, that kind of stuff. Um.
It could be work processing, and then you would have to allow it.
Well, it holds.
Either way, it's a, it's a single family dwelling unit. Um, what he does with it, who we rents to and how long he rents for is unregulated in that. District.
Now, did you winterize yours?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's here or there, but it it has been used, it's finished, like it's a livable unit, right? It's there, you know.
There's one you're looking to buy.
The one I am looking at. It's presently, it's in Meredith, New Hampshire.
Have you had any, any, or is that? I ask was. Have you heard any comments one way or the other from neighbors up there about your your caboose up there?
Um, people love it. This this.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, one of our neighbors. When her dad comes up, he stays in the caboose, so. I mean, no, it's it's.
I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah.
I think they're pretty neat.
Thirty five feet long. Nine feet wide.
I mean, he's, I don't know, he's basically putting a single family, like you said, and Michelle. He's basically putting a single family, like I said, and Michelle happens to be an old hoops.
Get it up, he has to buy it.
Uh, yeah, pretty close.
I know, I looked in the same one. Watch him up and take it off. Yeah, but you must have put back down and all that.
Um, preliminary here, you know, we're picking the tires. We figured out these things.
Jared, um, I'm pretty familiar with your property. You're talking like on the side further down towards the back.
I drew a little. To the back of the property on the Hanson Farm.
Side in the back, yeah.
It would be.
A stock A fencer.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Yeah, I went up, looked at it.
Right, then in the front, yeah, yeah. That's what I thought, I just wanted to ask.
I assume you'd take down a portion of the fence because you're gonna go put the driveway in off.
Possible. I mean, you probably never want a situation where you have a driveway. On another lot, if that's even a problem, I'm just saying a scenario could be a shared drive to go in. If you can picture. Marie's old trailer.
I can picture it.
You know, that or take down a small section. I guess.
Either way, probably.
I guess it's not a huge issue, I mean. I know they put up that. That's a whole other story, but you know, they put up that nice fence. For different reasons and. As long as it satisfies. The neighbors, I guess.
Right. But I don't think the purpose of the fence would be. Diminished. By cutting. Section down to put a driveway into a single family house. It was the commercial activity that was being visually protected.
So, yeah, so those details, whatever, but yeah, I guess.
I guess the other question for the board is, um. Site plan review or just a land use permit?
Land use permit.
Land use.
Okay.
Well, I think.
The, the Conex bar on Maple Street, that just showed up, didn't it? Out of nowhere. Is it still there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put a mural on that.
It's as a commercial property.
It's an expansion to use technically.
It's an expansion of news.
But I mean, so did that require a site plan review?
Plus waived. I mean, he could supply for site plan review and request waivers. You know, some of the more significant questions.
It's less than five hundred square feet, right? It's, you said thirty five by nine. So even if it were thirty five by ten, be three fifty. So it's under the threshold. For an expansion.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Is that, is that?
Five hundred is five hundred square feet. Um, if you increase the. Five hundred square feet or more. Triggers site plan review. This is kind of an oddball thing. Adding our rental unit, but it's less than five hundred square feet, so.
But he's, yeah, but he changing the using to use. I mean, it might be to his benefit if he comes in and just requests waivers, just in case after it's up, some of a lot of price foul.
That's true.
But if he, if he comes in for safe plan review. He doesn't. Need to bring an engineer drawing, survey drawing and all of that.
You know, we're getting a minute out of here at one meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't wanna overburden with.
We don't, we don't wanna stop.
Prove mine, say plan review on. Pretty.
You're a slut.
Drawings on a, I use the tax map. Through where the caboose was and where the water and sewer were. Yeah, that's, that's what I brought in. Yeah.
I don't think you're gonna get a lot of.
Pushback.
Pushback about a, any of it. So if you, I mean, to me, if you wanted to. Well, forward while he's applying for, if, if we think he needs site plan and review just to cover all the bases. Site plan view is not a big, big process.
Well, you got here, we just did one. He was saying out here at ten minutes.
Think about it. This is just basically a cavity for a place here. Just different shape.
You go on an application for site plan and review and be.
No, I think I just got it here.
When could we? When do you need the, the question of timing that you, when do you need?
I can get back to.
I have to do the notice, that's the problem. So it's gonna be.
It is gonna be too long.
What about? When does it become a changing use? If it's just part there.
Think there's any issue if he parks there until he.
It's a vehicle. It's a vehicle, right. He's got a bunch of vehicles there. He's got, it's like a school bus.
We left, we left right across the street. We let him store his uh, container.
Someone being replaced. Happenable.
It's a land use compliance, land use compliance certificate once you're done.
Right, and you couldn't get that until you hook up to water and sewer and you couldn't do that until you.
Is the regulating of thing here, but. If, if you wanted to buy it. And, and move it to there and set it on the rails. And not hook up the water, not hook up any water and sewer to it till you get site plan and review. Then I think you're probably gonna, that's probably the, like you said, it's a cart before the horse, but. Base don't wanna hear, hear it tonight. I don't think a lot. No, I don't think you're gonna have any problem. I mean, it, it is a little bit of a gamble. That someone might come in, but I don't see it.
Think about it, it's gonna meet our ordinance, so maybe someone's gonna ask for screening or something like that or lighting, but. I mean, there's no, I don't see any reason why it's not.
It's not. It's not, I'm not allowing you.
Right, so, yeah, they might say, hey, you know, it's gonna have a light that shines.
For you than you're going against you, that's for sure.
And then at that point. Like in your case, Bojek, you're taxed. As a dwelling. A surgery while on your. Primary residence, right? That's just how it looked at going forward. You know, taxing whatever.
Yeah, it's just like, it was like this, yeah, it'd be twenty five thousand.
At that point, once you establish it as a.
The land use permit will trigger an assessment of review.
Go on the website, you can fill up OJ's property. You can look and see what his assessed value is for. The caboose. And then. Drive by a thousand, multiply by the next.
No, I, I'm not worried that that part's whatever, just. You know, as it sits there. It's nothing in full play plan.
Well, until it's, it doesn't, it's a. It's not even a building yet. I mean, it's gonna be like a vehicle. Parked out in the back with other vehicles.
If you look at the timing. So. If you purchase the thing now. And the, the meeting's not gonna. Site plan review's not thirty days. It's gonna take you at least thirty days to get that thing here. On rails and sewer part. So you would, you would probably by November, December, have your permit, be able to use the thing. You know?
No, I follow if you're tired, yeah, if you want.
Timing wise.
That caboose is in pretty good shape. I looked at it.
Logistics wise. You're gonna need a crane to get that off. The truck, you move it. And then you don't, let me finish, then you can.
There's another way to do it.
Then, then. If, if. If your water and sewer isn't hooked up. Before then. It's gonna be hard. Can't dig under a caboose. That I can tell you. But if you, if you at least stubbed in your water and sewer down and out so that. All you need to do is get an excavator to come back and dig.
Or sits on two separate. Right, front and rear. You don't have a full set.
You don't need it full set.
Right, and then I, you know, whether you do it one way or the other, but I think that. The, like the water sewer comes out of like the middle.
The middle.
More metal, if whatever, but. So I'm, I'm not sure that that would even interfere. I'm not, uh, we'd have to look at that one.
Well, we had to dig down. Three and a half feet, I think it was, to put in a solid base so that it doesn't squish the land down. So if, if you, if you're gonna be digging, put your water and sewer in and at least.
Knowing the street is there.
Right, you know what direction it's going.
So how would that work permit? Like if he doesn't have a site plan review approval. He wants to put in water and sewer.
No, no, no.
A line it just.
He just wants to put pipes in the ground and stub them off dead end. Yeah.
Just be a risk.
Oh, yes, there is a guy in. His last name, I can't tell you, but he moved, he moved the flying Yankees. But he's already, he's. He's been to see the unit, he's done, you know, so this is like. I guess he's willing to do it. Before the weather change, you know, before.
So that's coming.
Yeah, the cost, for sure.
They moved two of these, one of the cranes. The other was on a flat bed with rails on it. The rails are lined up, she tracked the trailer and lined right up to it, it rolled right onto the, onto the track.
Yeah, it's pretty neat, I'll be honest with you, how they pull that off, but.
They moved two of these already. Till my lifetime.
Okay, all right.
We'll see you next month.
Uh, yeah, I would, I would start to do your site plan application now. So it can be. Soon as you can, that we're there, it, it's on. It's on docket.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Lucky, Eric.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Oh, what?
Uh, let's see, Alex Ray.
Ron West is not coming in until. Maybe, uh. Two weeks from now. So. That's on later on down. But that, that was another human being that was gonna be kind of showing up. Um, but he's decided that, um. Running a restaurant bar is a little overwhelming. And so he doesn't wanna. Do it yet, but he might come in in two weeks and talk to. About it. For some time down in the future.
That's fine, so.
Right, but he's not coming in tonight.
That's fine. So the question is, is he withdrawing his application for the legal commission?
Uh, he's not gonna follow through with it and had the wrong name on it anyway. It said Ron White. It's not Ron White, he's.
Well, that could be a clerical error down in Pocket too.
No, we're not. Not signing off on. He doesn't wanna do it.
Okay. All right, so we're at Alex Ray and the DOT.
I just want you to know what the situation is, and that's why I put that. Raina suggested that I let you know what's happening.
So.
And everything that was said is on here, so.
So Alex does not have to. Do anything with the DOT, right? Except. Excuse me, I should rephrase that. From what I've read, Alex. The only thing Alex has to do with DOT. Is permit for the Forest Bridge Drive Road. He has nothing to do. With the Pollard Road. Entrance.
So.
That's, that's my understanding of reading the DOT's letter.
Right, so I guess the issue is, is that. If the diner causes a problem on Pollard Road, the town is on the hook.
It's, it's the town, it's up to the town to.
Right.
The DOT made recommendations to the town. I'm assuming that. Planning board. And the planning boards. Notice of decision did not reflect anything. As a condition, so therefore there. There are. That's my understanding of it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to have Alex come back in.
No.
You're just giving, this is just for our information.
Okay.
All right. Anyone have any questions on that?
So we're saying though, that just to be clear, that. If the state comes back and says that we have to do a traffic study. Or if they do a traffic study and come back and say, we need to put in right hand turn lanes and send the. Whatever. The town puts the bill for those.
The state. We got a letter from the guy, email from the guy from the state stating that it's the town's. Responsibility because it's the town road. The state's not gonna come in and, and do any study. The only thing, the only study that they're suggesting was that. Um, coming out onto, uh. Forest Drive.
You're missing the part.
No, it says right here, the traffic analyst request was for the benefit of the town to maintain adequacy of the traffic control of the road to Route. New Hampshire one twelve as legislated, I would say. Two thirty six colon sixteen.
That's, that's coming.
If the access to Pollard Road is found to be deficient, the town will be responsible for improving the traffic control at Pollard Road and the. New Hampshire Route one one two junction for the safety of the public, so I think. They're concerned about what this is dumping.
Where, where are you reading?
On page five of the agenda, second box, second box.
So. You're looking on page four, the second box.
Five, page five.
Page five.
The very, you know, Carol's printed out the exchange between the two bodies. Very last. You know, uh, emails from Harrison Gates to Hampton DOT Highway Maintenance. That was on September eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty four, it's twenty twenty eight.
So the first part of the first paragraph says that. The driveway permit will not be contingent on traffic analysis for Pollard Road. The second part says. What you just read. If the access to. The Pollard Road is found to be deficient. Who's gonna find it? To be deficient because it's a town's responsibility.
Well, I think they're gonna, because they're, they're gonna.
The DOT, the DOT is not gonna do a study on Pollard Road.
If it affects the traffic on one twelve.
On one twelve.
We have to fix it on our, on our own nickel. So what he's saying.
Right, at that intersection between one twelve and Pollard Road, right.
I mean, it could be as simple as adding some striping or whatever. We don't know what, you know.
It could mean creating a left hand turn lane. In the center of Route one twelve, turn left there. And a right lane to go around the traffic that's sitting there trying to turn left.
Well, in that case, do we?
We pay for it.
Yeah, but in that case, so. Doesn't, it's not fair that the town pay for. Traffic study for a. For a business.
I mean.
Related.
It's according to this, no traffic study is gonna be done, so I guess somehow start having a lot of accidents at that intersection. I think then they'll start.
But then they'll come to the town and the town will have to bear the cost of doing a study and. Whatever the study says, if it's a traffic light or whatever. And I don't think that's fair that the town absorbed that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that. We, we understand what the. Power grab says before we make a decision.
That's okay. I'm, I'm glad you corrected me because I, the way I read it, I thought that it didn't. That the state didn't care to do anything on Pollard Road, which they don't. Read it between the line a little bit.
The first read, you're like, oh, there's nothing to worry about. Then when you read it a little more, you're like, oh, Jesus.
So they're not gonna require.
Unless there's a.
Traffic study. For the, that connection from Loop, um, Common Man to Pollard Road, not gonna require it. But if they. Find it to be deficient, doesn't say what. Criteria, who makes the decision, is it appealable? But if they find it deficient.
So how do we?
Well.
We've already given Alex a okay.
Based on getting a New Hampshire DOT driveway permit. Now.
So as part of the review for that permit, they've come up with this.
They've come up with, with. A, a necessity to study that New Hampshire one twelve Pollard Road intersection. And see if. This is gonna cause a deficiency.
This is gonna cause a deficiency that, that will. Then require the town to pay to fix it.
Oh, question. The, for the diner, it's just in and out on Pollard, if there's no connection to go through, um, like Forest Ridge side. Oh, there is.
There is.
There is, so you can.
Exit, you, you can.
You can.
Exit on the Forest Ridge.
And come out to one twelve.
Come out to one twelve.
Or you can go through Pollard.
Right.
Okay.
Now, the exiting out to Forest Ridge.
Yeah.
Gonna require a DOT permit. For the access via. Forest Ridge. Send the traffic at that.
Yes, yep. There's so many people in the highway that they can control on that street.
So I suppose we could do it under two, two things. We could do it under that number eight. We could also do it under number two, which says. Town Engineering Corp's line of review and approval for stormwater management and all other test aspects. So. It could be said that during. During the review by the town engineer and New Hampshire DOT was pointing out that.
Right, it's still.
As long as it's not a problem. Well. Could we modify the permit, say? That if the state finds a defect in this or a problem, that it is then the property owner's responsibility to. Pay for the implementation of it.
He would be the root of the problem, not the town.
Right.
He's really. It's not, nothing we did, right now the intersection.
Yeah.
It's fine, right.
Right.
Kinda like the same deal they did down at Dave Rogers, realized they had the right of way.
Do we modify this to do that?
Modify what?
Modify the. Notice of decision, or how do you, how do you negate a notice, notice of decision based on?
I don't think you negate it, I, I think you take the notice of decision.
Based on condition of.
So, wait a minute, is the review is still ongoing, it hasn't been closed, right? The diner. Raise, raise.
The conditions of.
I think he's, I think he might be done with it. Um, isn't he done with it? He's done with it.
How can he be done with it before?
Well, except for the, the permit, we're still, that's the only thing outstanding, is waiting for the DOT permit.
So Ray could say that based on the DOT's. Review. And emails that. This needs to be addressed, and then, then the, it hasn't met the conditions.
I, I would say that, 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 based on, again, Ray's review. That the applicant needs to. Prove. That, um.
There's no issue there.
There's no issue with the traffic there, that, that the DOT is pointing out.
Or, I, I would say an and or, you can also say or, that if it becomes a future problem, that he's willing to. Pay for and implement wh- what the DOT suggests in the future.
Well, it.
How is he gonna, how's he going to establish that now?
They do a traffic study.
You think a traffic study would be able to? Tell whether or not there's gonna be.
That's, that's the only way to do it. I mean, even if someone comes along and said, gee, we've seen, noticed a lot of accidents over the last six months, it's a diner, well, you still have to get an expert. Verify it.
Well, I can, I can understand that, but.
So, I mean.
I was trying to keep moving and, and.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think Carol wants to interject here.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Um, I think what he was trying to say, reading between the lines, Crane, and I think that, you know, we brought it up, um. You know, that. Possibly the planning board should ask for a traffic study. They very strongly argued against, um, having to do a traffic study. And, um, normally that would happen as part of a. You know, notice of decision, you would say the, to the applicant. Your business is possibly gonna cause traffic issues, and so. You should do a traffic study, um, to determine if that is the case. And then maybe some modification has to happen as a result. But I don't think you can do it after you've already issued a notice of decision. The condition did not include, um, the traffic study. Did not include any modification of the road, and I don't think. I mean, you can ask your town attorney, but I don't think that you can then go back. And ask the applicant to do something that. Originally. Was raised in the meeting and you said, no, we don't need a traffic study.
It wasn't, you know.
Guys, can I say something? Um, I remember. In our TRT meeting, very specifically today, when we were going over Alex Ray Diner, I have it listed on our list twice, I have the site plan review. And I also have the L U P, and I had questioned the TRT on if I should bring up, take off the site plan review part. Because we've gotten to this point with their approval, but Ray specifically said to not take it off. Because one of the conditions was approval by the TRT, the technical review team, and we had not approved it yet.
It hasn't been a TRT. The condition was not TRT, it was town engineer.
Well, that's what he said.
It wasn't TRT, it was town engineer.
I'm not arguing that, I'm just telling you, this is what we talked about in our meeting today, to give you an update about it.
I disagree with Carol, a- a- and I think that. The reason that you put conditions of approval on there, that they have to meet those. So, the. The notice of decision. Is, is. Null and void if you can't meet the conditions of approval. And. One goes with the other, so without being able to meet the conditions of approval, one of the conditions is that Ray is gonna look at it and the other can. Like, like I was saying, condition two and condition eight. Lend themselves to the fact of the. Of the DOT study and of the DOT review and Ray review. So if both of those. Entities. Looked at this and said, look. There, there could be a problem, and I think you need to take another look at whether or not you do a, a traffic study or not. Because it, it could be a problem, and if. Me, that's, why would you put a condition of approval? On there if, if it. If it's not met, I mean, the, the only thing you have is the. Notice of decision. I mean, that's all.
So I mean, we have the Common Man right now, the restaurant that exists, it's only open at night, that's dumping a lot of traffic onto that intersection. So is this gonna dump, you know, is it gonna anymore? Or not? In other words.
Oh, it's gonna make a cluster up there.
Mm-hmm.
I believe.
The store doesn't make a cluster up there.
I'm gonna tell you, I've, I've lived there a long time, there are times. A lot of times in the winter. And during high peak weekends in the summer, where you try to. Totally messed up, so.
Okay.
But I brought that up, I, I, I'm not gonna go there anymore, but I'm just saying, I, I think the planning board. I, I think we should ask the town attorney. Say, look. Jason. This is, uh. This is what we did. This is what DOT said and two pieces. I mean, Alex might just say, you know what?
The other thing you can look into. Anytime you make a decision, plenty of workers on the board, there is a twenty day waiting period, after that board. They need to peel at the stage of the issue, and they, and they should sort of die.
Can't appeal your own decision.
Yeah, plus we passed that anyway.
Yeah.
Well.
This was August twenty-eighth.
Agreeing with Paul, um, even flapjacks on weekends, people are parking in here.
Yeah.
And they're going across, and there's always like cords of traffic because people have to stop, everyone's crossing the street. In that area there, there's only an east-westbound lane, because there's no third or there's no turning lane. And now you start again on a hot weekend where there's a lot of people up or during the winter. There is definitely gonna be jam ups, I'm not saying accidents, but it's gonna be a congested area, that's all. There's one comment somebody made one time. I'd rather have a parking lot full, not enough people to be able to park in it, than park a lot that's empty. One thing we gotta look at, Phil.
Alex.
Well, I.
Yeah.
I. Yeah, but I don't think we're talking about emptying out the parking lot, I think. You know, a traffic engineer could look at that, he'll come up with a solution, we'll see, that's so simple.
He, he may not even say it, it's necessary either.
Right, it might not even be an issue.
What is the capacity? I don't remember what that, uh, the diner is supposed to hold. One thirty-five? That's the North County Council have a person. If that traffic, they could do it at our quick one.
Can we put it on the L U P as one of the little bullet points?
Let the planning board discuss this if you would, please.
I was asking a question, Paul.
Okay, just, yeah, Jay, just hold on, we'll let, we'll let you speak, give us a second. Okay.
The, the, those kind of councils always have some kind of. Traffic plan or study, they probably wanna do a quick scenario of it, in and out, we have by the North County Council.
Yeah.
Why don't we get more information from them, they take you a lot of, we take you a lot of pressure off. Carol, if you have them do more of this stuff, that we're paying them to do. Right now, we're paying them much, much longer every year, and we're not asking for it in the back.
I mean, I, I mean, we can make the inquiry, I just don't see where they'd have a traffic engineer sitting idle waiting.
If you had to hang your hat on the decision, it should be from the DOT's, the. Point of view, because they're gonna be the ones that have the issue, so. Me, it should be. It, it should come from. The DOT and Ray, and I think we have the ability to do that. Just ask Jason. And Ray, and Ray may say, you know what? I'll do it.
He may not, he doesn't know.
It seems to me like between the two, I don't remember the use of, but two and eight, three and eight, that, that, that. Um, we, we brought up. The DOT issue, and we, we conditioned it on final approval by Ray. That either one of those could, could. Substantiate. The.
Reason.
The, the response to DOT that specifically says. The town, if it's found to be deficient, the town will be responsible. So, so. They're saying that. They. Will only look at the traffic. Um, study of the intersection of Forest Ridge and one twelve, but it's not on Pollard Road, but we're, we're. Responsible. To me, that says that they are not comfortable with that. Even though it doesn't technically require a driveway permit for that one intersection. Um. So either through number two or number eight. I think it'd be reasonable to go back and ask them to do their own traffic study, if they get the South Country Council to do it, fine, if they get some.
Other company, yeah.
Other company, fine, um. Carol, you seem to think that there's an issue with that?
Um, yeah, there's already. I think that you're reading, um, your notice of decision. In an unusual way. I think he could have somebody else. We did full attorney to see if that. Way and he could read that.
Yeah, pretty, it's an idea.
What?
Yeah, pretty, and tonight, you already made an approval. It was just for her, on Ray or the state.
Is, is Ray? Like, ready to issue that, that approval like tomorrow?
There, oh, pretty much we're out of feeding, it's kind of like, um. The blind men of the elements. So. Um.
Let me rephrase my question, can you contact Ray tomorrow morning and say to pause doing that, we're gonna ta- contact Jason? Yeah, I mean, if it hasn't been, if he hasn't been issued yet. Well, that's what I would think, that it'd be easier to say, Ray, don't sign that. But we talk to Jason. Talk to Jason. Send him a copy of the notice of decision, send him a copy of the correspondence with the DOT. And say the planning board looks at this, that either number two and or number eight. Would justify. Um, a, a request for a traffic study. In response to the DOT's, um, email about issuing a driveway permit.
But I'd also like to include near the decision that. That we think that. That it should not be, the, the cost for any of this should not, whether it's done now or later, should not be borne by the town.
No, we're just asking for a traffic study.
Oh, I understand that, but it still shouldn't be borne by the town.
The traffic study would be the applicant.
Right.
Just like if they do an app, a traffic study for the Route one. Uh, Route one twelve Forest Ridge. Intersection.
I agree, I think we asked. This.
I mean, if, if you read the first paragraph, the first. Two sentences of that second box on page five. It says the diner required to get a New Hampshire DOT driveway permit for the access via Forest Ridge Drive, a private access to Route one twelve. The next sentence says, the driveway permit will not be contingent on a traffic analysis for Pollard Road. That implies to me that they have to do a traffic analysis for the Route. One twelve Forest Ridge Road Drive, is that? Do you understand, is that, that being correct?
I would agree with you.
Yeah.
So, so, so if they're doing one for here. And we're asking them to do one for twenty feet away. Right, just piggyback. Is that, is that a whole new study, or is that just like, you know, another couple of hundred bucks?
Well, put it together, but that would do.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, they already have to do a traffic study. There should not be a big fight.
I would think Alex probably has.
People he uses.
Connections in the DOT that he could probably talk to him and say, hey, can you guys just study this thing for me?
Well, I don't think the DOT does traffic studies, right? You hire a.
They hire somebody.
Turn out and whatever that company is or some other one. They come out and do it. But again, the, the two roads are. I mean, twenty feet is an exaggeration, but they're, they're right next to each other.
And, and these are conditions subsequent, subsequent to being able to. Have a, a review, I mean, approval.
Yeah.
So, if, if the conditions aren't met. Then you don't get your approval.
Well, I, I think I might want to just reach out to Harrison Gates, Carol, and ask them, they're requiring a traffic study, just get the answer, not, not just guess.
Yeah, there's definitely a study, you haven't opened there.
They're not gonna require a traffic study for Pollard Road and.
Right, no, but are they required one for Forest Ridge? Onto Route one twelve, doesn't really. It implies it, but it doesn't say they have to, yeah, it doesn't specifically state it, that's a good.
There you go, Jason.
No.
Paul, do you have anything else?
Oh.
Jade, did you wanna say something?
I'll say.
Okay.
Um, lastly, I just read, I didn't know they were having, they're gonna have a drive-through also. They have a drive-through window here, and I didn't know that, I just thought about it, but. That is another access for more traffic too.
Yeah, more than.
You're not gonna have people staying there, people will be buzzing through, so there's additional traffic because of that.
Pick up on that. Great. Carol, so Carol, what, what is the plan of attack here?
Talked into their microphones.
Okay, so we're gonna have.
They can get all the parts.
Hold off on signing it. We're gonna consult with Jason about, uh, items two and eight. On the notice of decision. We're gonna reach out to Harrison Gates to see if they're requiring a traffic study. Uh, for Forest Ridge at Route one twelve. Did I get everything?
Yes.
Yep, that sums, it sums. Right. One. Next item. Letter from Attorney for Forest Ridge Property Owners Association, the Pines at Forge Ridge regarding the Pines trash slash recycling pad received September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. So I guess. Uh, some of us have brought up concerns that that's. The Pines was supposed to have their own recycling.
You want me to step down for this one because you guys are talking about it or not?
Well, yeah. Are you, are you in a butter, Paul?
Uh, not really.
So the town's properties.
I mean, it's up to you, it's your call, if you feel that you have a conflict.
I mean, it's up to you. It's your call if you feel that you have a conflict.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I think my, the town's property separates me from anything in Port Ridge.
Okay.
I get notices, but. So I watched the last meeting. And I noticed that the land board, because I wasn't here. Land board thinking about allowing them to use it for the whole of. Forest Ridge. All of it. And that was not what was approved. There was no and or ifs or buts. It it states that they are supposed to have a separate solid waste. For that. I mean it. The minutes state that the recycling shall be limited to the use of the. Current units built or approved as of this date. It states that on August eighth, there's no, and and there's no reference to an either or situation. It says. The applicant property owner shall provide a new separate recycling facility. Uh, it states further that the Pines shall not use this present recycling facility for the Forest Ridge development. Um. I mean. There's issues with with. It being used for more than what was. It was approved to be used for. I mean, on the notice of decision. It states that. Units built of as of that date. And. The only other way that it could be approved would be to let it be approved with. With condition that or or no condition. And no condition, I mean, the whole place could use it. Well, there was a condition put on it that it could only be used for that. For the amount of units built as of that date. My parents were here. That's what they, that's what they said and they agreed to do it because they were trying to get that recycling center there because all they had before that. Whereas a bunch of dumpsters, like Joe said. Placed everywhere along and and they wanted to have, they wanted to have a common, common place to dispose of it. By allowing the whole of Forest Ridge and a and any future development to use it. It it. It brings a lot more trash to that area. I don't personally. Have. Any affect by it. But. My brother Mike does, the other lady that does. Um, you can, I was over there visiting my brother the other day. You could smell it every time it runs, you can hear it. I mean, and when they pick it up, they pick it up. I guess apparently they pick it up early. A lot of times they weren't, they're not supposed to do that, but. Think ways probably just it's in recycle wherever it fits, you know? Um, but. It. And David Jaeger, when he came in. And we, he was coming in for that approval for the, was, it's not the Pines, it's, what was it, Forest Gardens?
Yeah, but that's a company, he came to the ZBA.
No, he came to the plan, he came, I think it was the plan board. He came, he came to plan board.
When was this?
Forest Circle, was it?
The Forest Circle that he came in for? Came to the plan board.
Okay, when when did he come in just?
I don't know exactly when he came in, but.
And what 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 did he come in for?
The building up, uh, the buildings up the top because he wanted to use that lower. Level, remember, and.
That was a ZBA case, I believe.
Yeah, he got a variance.
Was it CVA, Carol?
Yeah.
Nothing I remember.
He was requesting um two.
Maybe it was.
Variance for building five and building six.
To use the lower level.
Because he had had to. Um, s- over time, basically spend about a million dollars to.
Move the material.
To excavate all of the stuff. The crumbled foundations that had been buried, all the concrete and everything that had been buried at the sites where the buildings were supposed to go.
Yeah, so he came in and. I approached him about that and he said, look, he said, if it's, if it was proven that. We were supposed to make another recycling facility up here, we'll we'll do that.
Okay.
And now it's not happening. And now it's, it seems like they don't want to follow what they stated they were going to do.
I think we have a little plan. Over there, Paul.
Carol?
I I think that that was Forest Gardens, which had been approved. I mean, the part of the discussion was that that had been approved prior. To, and I I thought it was supposed to be approved. I'd have to look at it again, but.
No, but I mean, like, like I said.
Let her finish.
I thought it was the approved, not just built, but approved.
And it does say, it does say, no, they brought that up where it says built or approved, but. It was, it's as of that date, when he, when my parents sat in here, they said, so you mean if. If tomorrow another building gets. Built up there, no matter where. They'll have to build another recycling place. And they said, yes, we'll do that. And. So there was another.
The 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 statement says built or approved.
I know.
I mean, I don't know what was said at a meeting decade ago.
I was there when they said it, but they, what Paul said, well, I recollect too, but I don't think it was ever put on the plans.
I mean, my mother and father were there and they said, because they 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 didn't want them to have it. And and they said, look, we really want to make this thing and put it here. And they said, well.
I think I think they had already done it, though.
No.
They built the recycling.
Hmm, they they built it and then and then my parents came back in. Because it had, uh, they had put the fence up around it and it put the screening. And then there it was because it was compacting, they had bought it, put a compactor in there instead of a dumpster. It was all liquids was was going out. Going on the ground. So they had to put a berm in the back and that's it. It's been quite a. Quite an ordeal, you know, I mean. Truly. And if if I look at it from a practical standpoint. Have just one dumpster there. They would be better served to have multiple places up there instead of just. Well. I mean, and that's why it was said that they. They would do that and. I just think it's it it's after the fact and now we're, they want to do this. It doesn't, it's not going to cost a lot, I mean, what, they can build that thing, put a fence up around it. And they pay waste me, it's been a monthly fee like that they am here anyway, dump it. And and if you allow more people to come there, I mean, you got to look at it from the standpoint of if Forest Ridge. When it gets fully developed, all of those people came down there. That's a ton. That's a lot more. It's a lot more, everything, a lot more noise, a lot more stink, a lot more everything. No, I mean, it's.
In the first section of Forest Ridge is built. There's one small one, where it is now, one at the end down by the pump station and one across the street. As he passed it, he passed the guy, she had to ride.
Where Ted Sutton was up in there.
Correct, yeah, there was one another one. Up on the hill. The station taken out.
Alex said my my parents were alive then and they were. They were adamant, but not want to have it at all. But they said, look, if it's just for what you got there now, and that's how, and that's how it went through. And uh.
Okay.
It just seems like it's gotten changed.
Do we have minutes when uh the Pines came in for approval?
Looked at it once before. It never mentioned about the, you have a doctor being installed in the blueprint.
Well, I mean.
I believe it was a condition of approval. At least that's the attorney's letter states that it was a condition of approval, new separate recycling center. Um. And separate provisions for traffic, traffic removal.
Right.
Was the condition.
And he's, a- and and the attorney is a little bit off too, I think, because he talks about a bond. The bond. Had no reference to the solid waste. The bond was just for the road and for the stormwater management. Um, and and he's trying to say the town. Do not have released the bond because of the solid waste issue. And those two weren't related at all, my, in in my opinion, so this is. But.
Thank you, Paul.
Like I said, I mean. David Jaeger said, he he. Well, apparently it was at the. Um. The other meeting. For the zoning board. He said he would. I don't know if it made, I don't know if it made the minutes or not where he said that, but.
Well, it's on tape, so it's. On YouTube, so you may have a record of whether he said it or not.
Yeah.
So Carol, a question, we have this letter from. Uh, Parnell. Um, your attorney. Have we responded to any? Okay, so that's what we had talked about tonight is the initial response.
Right.
Um. Would it be? A good idea to have the first. Action to be to contact um David Jaeger. As the developer of the Pines?
He. Um. That went to bankruptcy. So David was. Out of the Pines. So there's the Benedetto bought the four.
Unbuilt.
Incomplete, um, you know, the the foundations, the two, you know, the four incomplete units. Two duplexes, um. And he had nothing to do with the original development and David Jaeger was the bank. You know, he was the one who foreclosed. On. The estate of. Rick Elliott. So. He was not the developer, he was the. Money lender. So. I I don't know, I I don't know how that would shake out. I don't, I just don't know.
Joe?
The point that even if the property goes bankrupt. The permit goes with the property. And what's the other property, both responsibility that he has and there's no agreement.
Okay, so right, so there's always a developer.
I did ask Karina about this. And Karina informed me that. But as Carol just, those lots, those. Foundations that were built, they were sold to individuals. They are not, and I don't know how this all works, but. She explained to me that they are not part of any association. And that they were independently bought as homeowners.
Right.
And 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 therefore they have no responsibility to. The Pines at all. So they, the Pines doesn't have to follow any. Any of the, like the notice of decision or anything that's been gone through.
And you can use facilities to water the door.
Wait a minute, I I I think that, you know.
I don't know how they build without a permit. So I don't know how, how long.
They must have a permit.
Well.
What, what the the guy who bought the foundations?
Yeah, how's he building?
No, he has a permit. He has permits to build those.
Well, because so the the developer is not in control of the development at any point. It's been turned over to the homeowners association. So they're on. Those homeowners are on the hook for any deficiencies.
Which homeowners? The ones that that.
The Pines and the association, whatever that sub.
Whether it be just a foundation or a whole building.
So the foundations that were there that they sold and auctioned to individual homeowners is part of the association? Because it had a foundation, is that what you're saying? I I I don't know if I'm.
I don't, I don't even know if they're members or not.
Sorry, with the contract development, every so, after a certain amount of units are sold. You know, basically the homeowners take over control. The original developer relinquishes control. Homeowners associate takes over. So those responsibilities from the developer. Those are transferred. This homeowners association takes the role of the developer.
I didn't understand that from Karina because she said that the, the way I thought she explained it to me that that didn't happen.
Well, I mean, I think what what she's trying to say is that those people that bought those foundations, they are not. They haven't taken the place the developer. Homeowners association has taken the place of the developer.
So. Right, and so the permit to build came from the town, not the. Association.
Just because they're like developing doesn't make them the developer.
So how how do we fix this so that they can? So that it can get corrected a little bit is all I'm looking at.
Well, I I think that. Okay, I I think this board needs to decide, you know, is, what is it, twenty eight units? Is.
Twenty four, twenty eight.
Twenty four more units, um. Uh, acceptable into the existing trash. Facility that's there. Now, we don't have to make a decision that a hundred more that are unbuilt or can go there, but at least twenty four. According to this guy's um letter, it seems like they would be pretty easily facilitated in in the existing. Uh, footprint and structure and in 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 equipment that's there now. Um, is that an acceptable solution to move on from this whole thing? If not. Would would we want to contact David Jaeger who? At least you say, said that he would build it if he, we could show it. That it that it was required and will show that it's required and ask if he'll do it. Um, and then I guess. The the third thing would be to to enforce a cease and desist with the homeowners association and then. We open ourselves up to go into court and all of this stuff, so.
Here's what I would suggest. Kind of like what you said. I think that. I think that i- if we could do something like. Limited to the twenty four, but staying hard on anything over that twenty four means that you have to have another, because then. Because then there's a little give and take, you know, on on both sides. You know, you got twenty four more to build, but after that you are going to have to build. Another. Transfer recycling thing.
So you're talking, go ahead.
I say, and if we did that, which I agree with. Maybe that'd be a condition of approval. Um. That includes, uh, that is included in the bond for whatever project is next. So when someone builds the next, whatever, thirty units. And they come here and get permission, they build, they have to follow all of our conditions, but the bond is going to include.
Right, it just can't get forgotten, you know, as well. Because I brought this up at every. E- every time, I've got more paperwork on this goddamn trash than down there than you can believe, but. You know, I mean, in the interest of moving it forward and not getting the town in any trouble and 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 trying to keep. Parnells and everybody else and and the Forest Ridge happy.
No.
I think twenty four units is really not going to kill, make a big difference, but I think if you allowed. Anything.
More than that.
More than that, I think is going to be an issue.
I don't forget, though, that we can't decide or we can't make. The master association allow them into their. Recycling. He's implying that there's plenty of room. Um, but he doesn't own it. He doesn't run it.
That's right.
So so the first thing would be to ask. The homeowners associate, ma- master association, if they think that there's adequate. Uh, facility in that existing equipment.
There's no doubt that there's. Adequate room for it. And the reason I said that, oh, just because all I could do is empty it more often.
Right, well, it seems like.
It's a matter of how much goes in, how much come out, you know what I mean?
We still, we can't make them.
Right, no, no, I understand that. And and that's my concern. Is that when my mother, she wanted me to take care of this and that, she's gone away, but it it. It it's all about the amount of time to get to be squashed, the juice comes out of it, the smell that comes out of it, the dumping of it more often. That's, that's what the concerns are. So, like I said, to mitigate that. I sit here and I I would agree with him. Twenty four, that's what they're saying, but then after that, it's it's. It has come. Has come back to what the. A new news, solid waste of.
All right, yeah, and Carol's been had her hand up for a while here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, my only question is, um, we have some uh, single family lots up there that are not developed yet.
In the Pines?
No, um, in other spots.
In Forest Ridge.
In Forest Ridge, so.
I mean, I don't know.
I I have, I haven't counted them, there's. Well, no, I mean, a lot of it hasn't been developed yet. I mean, hasn't been subdivided into lots or everything. But there are a few lots up there that are not built on yet, so. I'm assuming.
On a lower road, probably, I think.
Okay, Paul, those. You know, those are already approved. They're they're lots.
Well, the whole, but if you look at the, use the word approved, the the whole.
The whole thing.
Forest Ridge approved.
No, 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 it isn't.
It's a planned phase development, so.
And each phase has to come here, right?
So I think, but I think we're talking.
If he's correct, and I'm just reading his email.
I got it.
The total number of approved units as of February twenty first, twenty eleven, which is when it was made, was two seventy five. At present, there are two fifty nine that have been built. With sixteen under construction. And then additional twenty four units approved but not yet built.
The current recycling. And trash location is under, still underutilized by sixteen units. So that, so you have sixteen plus twenty four.
Forty.
Plus sixteen, fifty six. That's what he's saying.
Well, it's underutilized by sixteen, so of the twenty four, the first sixteen.
Is he saying that there's forty that are still? Before they have to do anything, or is he saying that there's fifty six? So there's two seventy five.
I know his math doesn't add up, to be honest.
Oh, it doesn't add up.
No.
There's two fifty nine, he said the total approved is two seventy nine. Hey, you're right, his math doesn't matter.
I mean, I thought I lost count.
I don't know how many, um.
Two seventy five, he said, was approved. And he said there's two fifty nine, so minus two fifty nine.
Right, minus sixteen.
Six, what the hell?
Minus twenty four, we're at a negative number.
Two seven, right, two seventy five. Minus two fifty nine. The sixteen. The sixteen, he only has sixteen left according to what, I see, if there was two seventy five approved. And there's two fifty nine. That have been built to date, that only leaves sixteen left to build to to get the two seventy five.
Okay, so the Pines is twenty eight, is going to take up all sixteen.
And then.
And then some, another twelve, and then if.
Oh, you know what it means? I I think I just figured it out. The twenty four. Are the twelve duplexes that you approved in two thousand fourteen. So two thousand eleven, two hundred and seventy five were approved, two fifty nine were built, that. So two thousand eleven, two hundred and seventy five were approved, two fifty nine were built, that means that there were.
He's right, so he's right, he's got it right, he says that. He says that.
Sixteen not built up.
Right, there was two seventy five units approved, there's only two fifty nine, which leaves sixteen, he said it's still underutilized by sixteen units. So they can only build sixteen more. And then it will be at the two seventy five.
Right.
Okay, so, was, so the pines.
So you're talking about adding the pines, which is that twenty four.
So, one, once they get sixteen more, then they're at the number, the magic.
Twenty eight or twenty four, whatever's up there, they're going to go over that, so they'll be slightly over.
Right. And, and, and I think that's when it kicks in and says, but they have to build the norm, that's what I would.
Well, the next project we approve.
Phase.
Phase.
Phase we approve would have to have their own. Or, or their own, but bigger and, and do the next six phases or however many they're going to have.
And, and we address that, or whoever's on his board at, at that time addresses that issue.
That issue.
That's fine, as long as they do that, I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right, so do we need to?
But I think we need to memorialize that to them somehow. It says, here's the numbers, here's, here's what we think. And we understand and hit going forward, here's, here's what you're.
So maybe we should reach out to the master association just to make sure they're comfortable with everyone using that.
As a reminder.
Eh, eh, not everyone, just, just the pines, and the next project will have their own.
They'll have to start.
They're okay with the pines.
Pines.
When I said everyone, I meant pines and the unbuilt lots.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, not like, you don't build a unit, I just, I want to prove.
Once they come in for their next phase, they. And that's where it's mitigated and we can move on, but we should memorialize that somehow in writing so that.
Basically, they take all this rubbish and bring it down, put it, your butt is backyard. Really right.
Get a burn pile.
Yes.
Better than a burn pile.
All right. Moving along here, so next item, third party engineer. Guess we're going to do this, and I would ask not turn into a shouting match, and I'll give the staff and see you time to speak as well.
Oh, wait, um, Karina, uh.
Oh, do you have that letter from Karina?
Yes, I do.
I have a copy, if you want to make copies for everybody.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I just, oh, wait a minute, no.
That's the one where she's not going to be here?
Yeah.
Did I put, did I put it out? I kept going back and forth in my mind, should I put it out and not put it out? Why don't you give that to me, Jim, and I'll make copies of it? She gave it to me.
That's the last thing, that's good.
You want it?
Hey, I'm making out the rain, it's the backyard previous. Working great, yeah, no, no water flowing everywhere.
I haven't had much water lately anyway.
It's just like, when it doesn't rain, it works.
Month ago, it was raining, beat the van though.
Yeah, the beginning in, in the, in May and June.
Yeah, you can walk across the bricks now without getting wet up your ankles.
That's good.
And then had to jack the kitchen up.
You don't have to, have not to climb underneath there?
No, I'm going to go one more time, and then we can redo the kitchen. Fix all the cracks on the ceiling on the second floor, the walls. All way.
I've, I've got a copy of it.
Well.
I'd just like to point out.
Okay, wait a minute, I think people are still reading Karina's letter.
Yeah, I didn't see this one coming.
I'd like to point out, just. That the planning board voted. To put out a request for proposal. For third party engineer. And we voted on that. We also voted to have the engineers do a one for one. That was a vote of this board. It hasn't been carried out. All we've gotten is from the administration and the staff, reasons why they don't think we should be doing this. I think that the board is elected to do its duties and its responsibilities, and we all take votes. And we live by them, or we at least try to follow them, and in this case, for some reason, we're not. We're not, it didn't state that we were going to hire an additional engineer. It stated that we were going to put out a proposal, to see what we could get. And we asked that Carol do that, that draft proposal, and Karina made it up, I don't know why, but Karina made it up instead of Carol. But. I think we ought to follow through with the vote of this board, I don't think there needs to be a lot of conversation about it. Nothing that says we're going to hire a new third party engineer, so we're going to see what's out there and what we get for responses.
Okay, anyone have any other comments?
We have seventy eight on the line, so when we, we go here.
Yeah, like, I mean, I, I think we're just really talking, I mean, nothing's been decided.
Right.
I don't see what the big uproar is myself. Right, wait, we might get three uh, proposals, unless we're gee, this isn't going to work for us. Yeah. Right.
Does Ray have anybody else in his office?
I don't think so.
I couldn't hear what you said. What did you say?
Anybody else in his office? Is it just him?
Um, he uses, he uses other people, he has other people that, um, he reaches out to, for to do additional things for him.
He basically subcontract his work out.
Yeah, some of it, yeah.
Okay, does that include our work too?
I've never asked him that question.
Okay, no.
I, I know, I know we had big projects, um, he did, like, there was an architectural firm. That review, some, there's a, I remember a name, Turpin or something. That was, it had a couple Z's in it, I, I don't remember, but it was a, an architectural firm that helped him with. The, uh. The in-seasons behind us. Um, I remember there were three people that were in that group. Um, and it might have been a couple of other times too, when I was very aware that there were other people.
I mean, what we were supposed to do was review the request for proposal, I looked at the request for proposal, I thought Karina did a fine job.
Okay.
I think we put that out the way it is, see what we get for cementals, as you said, you know. We'll see, see what we get, and we'll go from there.
Okay, does everyone, anyone have any comments on Karina's uh, email that she sent out? Would it be worth answering?
Points here.
Sorry?
What's that, I can't, what do you say? He was speaking.
I was just looking, um. Well, she gives an explanation, it would take some time here, says, uh, in order to process any changes, blah, blah, blah. Tells about some of the snafus. And, uh. Well, submits, when people submit something to race for comments, you know. Could it be fifteen days, you're not going to make the next meeting, that's half the trouble, trying to do things that just don't exist yet. And applicants can get their own third party reviewer. It all makes sense.
That's really not the case, though.
They're not going to do it when they get it, you get it done here for free.
I mean, I think she makes a good point, that, you know, beating a lot of these big projects to have a meeting two weeks later is a lot. I mean, it's, it's a tight deadline, I think that's a good point, but I, I still think, you know, we should at least put something out there just to see what we get.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, but let's, does anyone have anything else about Karina's email, ask the staff to comment after that.
I, I, my question is, would those questions be worth answering? Uh, either before. We send out the RFP, or after we send out the RFP, before we hire someone? I mean, are those, are those valid questions that we as a planning board need to set our expectations for?
I don't think they're invalid questions.
Well, I think some of, some of them, some of them are good, and some of them I don't think.
All right, well, so.
But I think they could be, they could be used, those could be used, if we decide to interview a prospective. Second engineering firm, we could do some of these questions, say, what would you do, what would you suggest? These are some of the problems that we've come into. You know, and. The other thing that I would like to do is to, to see if there's any way. I mean, the reason I brought this up was because. That there's building spikes in Lincoln, and we get complaints from people, complaints from developers, complaints from contractors. And then the, the spike goes down and nothing happens, and then it goes back up and people start complaining again. So, I mean, you know, we'd be remiss not to at least look at, try to look at, see if there's not. Another way to improve this, so. That's, that's the whole reasoning here, it's not, you know, it's not to kick Ray out of the job. It's to look at better ways, that either things can be done faster, or maybe with, with other, other help. And that's, that, that's the whole, that's the whole reasoning here, and I think one of the things we want to do is to maybe look at. Look at these people who have come forward, or give them an opportunity to come forward and say, hey, look, what are your problems? Do you see your problems with the, the existing system? And give them an opportunity to, to say that, and if, if no one comes forward, then I guess there's no problem. But I got to tell you, sitting in this seat, listening to some of the developers and listening to contractors and stuff. On the streets and stuff, there's some prob, they think there's a problem, so we should. I, I think we owe it to people to try and make the system better if we can.
Well, I mean, we could put this out and then. Have someone, maybe someone's interested, maybe just wanted to be somebody's, um. Someone wants their own third party engineer, they could be on a list, say, well, here's some, here's some of the ones the board has talked to.
Right, but, you know, and, and when you look at that RSA that says that, it clearly states in there. That the applicant may request the planning board choose a different third party consultant, and the request may include the name of preferred consultant. The planning board shall exercise a reasonable discretion to determine whether the request is warranted, so it's totally up to the planning board. As to whether or not whoever they suggest is, is warranted, and to me, that. That spawns questions like, why don't you want to use one of the two engineers we have? You know, I mean, so they can say all they want, say, we want our engineer, we can say, well, we think it's conflict, you're going to hire an engineer that you're going to pay. I mean, so it's all different manner of things that we could be discussing at that time, but I think they would, the onus also would be on them. To say why they wouldn't want to use Ray or the other engineer that we had, if we had another engineering firm. You know, so it's truly up to the, to the planning board as to whether or not they can bring a third party engineer in, their own third party.
Right, but if I read that statute, I mean, if the planning board says, no, you have to have a pretty good, pretty good explanation as to why.
But so don't they have to have a reason as to why they don't want to use the towns, either for the two, one or two.
It says they can, they may ask, um.
They can ask, but we can say, look, we, we think.
But it doesn't say, it doesn't say they have to give a good reason.
No, but we can always ask them, is your engineer familiar with all of the ordinances of the town? And, and, and they say, no, you say, well then, how's he gonna, how's he gonna meet our criteria, how's he gonna be able to assess this plan? So I mean, it's, uh, it, it's not just as easy as I'm walking in and saying, hey, I, I've, I got Joe Engineering Company over here, and I want, I want them to review my plan. Because they did it on my house back in Massachusetts, and I want them to do the one in New Hampshire, well, it's a whole different state, I mean, it's, it's not just an easy walk in and. Say you're going to use your.
Well, yeah, you know, engineers, they, they're reviewing like the calculations for the drainage, um, you know, the road width, et cetera.
But they're also.
They're not really really reviewing compliance.
Oh, yes, they are. Ray is, Ray's looking at all of that, between stormwater and, and compliances of, of setbacks and driveway. And all, all that stuff, and how, how it meets the, the town's ordinances.
I guess, you know, an engineer, that someone that does that for a living, they, they go make sure order the town ordinance.
And that's why in Karina's request for proposal, it said that you have to do, be able to do things even like, um.
Site plant subdivision regulations.
Yeah, and, 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 um. Capital improvements plan, and things like that, because of the water and sewer ordinances, and driveway, the, the town's driveway ordinances. So it's more than just a review of numbers, it's a review of, and that's why I thought her, her, she was, or do whatever you want to call it. Was, uh, was appropriate.
Okay.
And again, we haven't said we're definitely going to hire someone, we said, let's start looking and see.
Right.
You know, let's talk to people who are complaining about it, and see, let them come in if they want, and tell us what they think's wrong with the, wrong with the system, that's all. I've talked to a couple of contractors, who said they, they would come in, because they, they've got some problems. And then we, we know some of the developers that personally come to the meetings.
I, I'm confused, are we sending this RFP out to contractors who want to come in?
No, 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 we're sending them.
Because, because you talked about having them come in and. You talked about having them come in and tell us what's wrong with the, with the. With the. System or process that we have and how do we make it better? Um, I don't expect any engineer to come in. And know what our system or process even is and tell us how to make it better. I think the person that you should most ask for that, or at least initially ask for that. Is Ray Corber. You know. What's wrong with that process, how do we make it better, and by we, I mean a collaborative effort between Ray Corber. The town staff and the planning board. I think, I think some of these questions and some of your ideas would be best answered first. By Ray Corber. Then as a follow up, if you wanted to bring in, and like personally invite, because I don't know, I, I'll, I'll do it. Certain developers. I shouldn't even say certain ones, any developer who's working in the town of Lincoln who wants to come in, it's an open public meeting, have their come in and say. What, what do you see is wrong with our? System and process? And then maybe we take the input we get from Ray, the input we get from. People who are going through the system and the process. And then determine what's the best way forward. One of the best ways forward might be to change our process. And I don't think we need to overhaul and totally revamp, but we may have to. Make a few tweaks, like saying seven days instead of, I mean, fourteen days instead of seven days, or you, whatever, tweak the process. I think the second thing we would do, might wanna do is do an RFP, but, but. With the goal of having shortlist. So that, yeah, Ray Corber is the town engineer, but these three were vetted. And they've said they wanted to do third party review for the town of Lincoln, they're familiar with our ordinances, cause I'd be part of the RFP. Deliberative and, and choosing process. And you could choose any one of these three, or two, or one, or whatever the number is, it doesn't have, but say, we've vetted these guys, you can choose them. You know. Or, or Ray. And then of course, there's the um. Choice that you seem to be going for is to, to pick one. That we hire and bounce things, you know, he gets one. He gets one, okay, so, so I think there's multiple options, but I don't, I don't think it's time to choose that option now, I think. A discussion with Ray would be warranted, a discussion with contractors would be warranted, and then a discussion amongst ourselves, including the staff of. What needs to be changed, tweaked, redone, so that the whole process goes forward more easily. And then pick one of those three options. Um, that we think would best fit in with, with the changed process. To have a contractor, I mean, an engineer come in here and tell us, you know, what's, what's wrong with our process. I would expect the answer to be, I don't know.
Might have some insight.
I don't, because.
I don't think I'd ask him that question that way, so I would.
I, I then explain, because that's what I heard from you, is ask them what's wrong with that process is what I heard.
I think when you're vetting these people, when you, when you put it out for an RFP. You tell them what you're currently doing and that you've had some issues. Say, what would you suggest or what would you do to make things different? To speed them up, to be able to. Uh, how would you review plans any differently, would you? This is what we currently do. And that's, goes along with what Jimmy was saying was, you know, look, they may come in and say. Things that we don't wanna hear and say, you know what, what we got is, is pretty good and, and that's where we're gonna stay. But they may come in with some other ideas, cause nobody has. Nobody's got all of ya. You know, answers, so maybe these guys come in, these other engineers come in with some. Some good ideas, and we say, you know what, this one was pretty impressive, they got a lot, you know, and. And, yeah. You know. We, we may wanna investigate going further with that one and saying we're gonna do a one form, because they have a different approach and. It might work a little better. But I think we owe it to. The applicants come in here to be able to at least look at that. Considering the comments that we've had. Delivered to us at this table from. Developers and stuff. And it's our responsibility to do that, not raised, not staffs, not Karina's, ours. They're not the ones, they're not the ones, oh Jay. Getting hollered at. Or getting discussed with, by, by the developers from across the table saying, hey. We're on, we're in the queue, or we sent this one, can't get it back, or we're doing, you know. Harold didn't do this, someone else didn't do that, or we didn't get inspected, or I'm not saying it, just cause you, I'm just giving whatever excuses they've, reasons they've been given. That's their perception. And we owe it to them to, to, to look at those before what happens again, and who knows when the next. Big building thing's gonna happen, you know, I mean, it could be Forest Ridge could take off. Murgosian could be over here doing this thing, but they could be doing the whole town, and all of a sudden, everything gets backed up again and people are hollering. And I don't think we wanna wait for them.
I just find it odd that you wanna look at it. And yet the. The one person who's like the center of all of this, you don't want them to be part of the looking. And that's Ray Corber. Why, why aren't we asking Ray Corber? His suggestions on making things move faster, his input on. Delays and, and. You know, some of the questions that are in here and.
Right here, the reason is, we've already got Ray. He hasn't given us any ideas now, what, we gotta ask him? I mean, we have to ask him. Maybe he's the wrong person for the job anyway, I think if Ray had an idea, or if he had a, something different, that he would offer that.
We have not. We've not given him that opportunity.
He has an opportunity every time he talks to us.
You know, we should start this, cause you know, right now it's dated October thirty first, so if we're gonna put this out, the deadline's gonna be November thirtieth. So I mean, it's, you know, at least six weeks out, I mean, I think. You should just put it out there and see what we get, you might not get anyone that you like.
That's the way we voted too, I mean, you know, we're sitting here.
And well, it hasn't gone out yet, so we can, you know, we can still change, change the vote.
If, if we did that for every decision we made, we'd never get anywhere. We rehash every application that came in. That's why we do votes, that's why we. You know, that, that's the way of the board, you vote, you vote for it and you. Move it along. And the fact that it hasn't moved along, I mean. It, it, it's not a great testament to the. To our. Ability. I think.
So this was out August. The August twenty eight meeting, I believe. This was last talked, when was this, this was last talked about when I wasn't here, so it was August twenty eight.
Yeah, I think.
So it's been like five.
The meeting, the minutes we just approved tonight.
Like six, six weeks since this first was proposed.
And nothing's happened.
What is the process with the responses that we get from this?
Exactly.
What is the process? Once we get responses to this.
Says right here. Selection process will include a value in each submitting engineering firm's statement of qualifications based on the engineering firm's qualifications. The submitting engineering firms will be rated and shortlisted and interviews will be conducted. The town will enter, into negotiations with, with a top rated engineering firm for a free. Fee proposal for engineering services. If not mutually agreeable, the town will entertain entry into a fee proposal from the second rated engineering firm and so on until an agreement is reached. The town reserves a right to discontinue the selection process at any time prior to awarding the contract. There will be no reimbursement to any engineering. Firm if the selection process is terminated.
That's our, that's. Standard language, I mean, but it gives you an ability to say. Hey, look, you know what, we haven't found anything better than what we have, and we're gonna discontinue this process, or we can say. We've heard a lot, some, some good things from. Engineer from A, B, or C, and we, we'd like to see a little further. Why are they out?
Right, you might, you might get someone come in, but I'm not gonna do anything, I just get a ten thousand dollar retainer, which in case he'd be out.
Right.
Steve?
I, I would just like to follow the letter of the vote for now, and maybe we learn something along the way. Um, I'll tell you again, I've been doing this for over fifty years and there's no speedy. Delivery. Everybody likes to think that they're quicker everywhere else, they're not. You know, you're, you're gonna build something in the spring, you're likely to get the foundation in by fall.
Yep.
That's the way it is everywhere. I don't care what they say. We built that big giant incinerator down in Kittery and, and then they made them illegal. It, it had that big huge things that they're doing nothing. But um. You never know unless you stick your neck out and ask some questions, I mean. We can come up with an idea, what's going on, talk to Ray, talk to us, talk to everybody, but it's just the mouse driving the cheese truck. You know, we have to get out there and look around.
So do we wanna make it? Go through um. Karina's uh suggestions first? Questions?
I think you send the RFP out.
When do we go through the questions?
Yeah, let me get some input from the staff that's here, so Sean, Carol, Jade, either of you wanna say anything?
Um.
That's okay.
I would, um, I had suggested before that you talked to Ray about it first, and you rejected that suggestion. And I don't know if you remember, but Ray had to have his. Surgery in his ankle replaced and. You know, he, he still managed to do some work, but he did get a little bit behind then, and he is now on, he's now mending. And on the mend, and he can now do a lot of things that he couldn't do. During those, you know, two months or whatever it was that he was supposed to be laying flat in bed with his foot up. So, um. I think that Ray is extraordinary. Um, and Ray is al- always giving us suggestions and always helping us. And you have not specifically the planning board, I can't imagine that he would. Just up and volunteer. Um, a suggestion unless you solicited that sort of, you know, that's by asking him questions. And I think that you owe it to him, he has been the. Town engineer since before I started working here. Um, and he has a lot of history with the town that, you know, I don't have. And Karina doesn't have, and. You know, I think that you owe it to him as a professional to have that conversation. That's how I feel.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we go to Karina's suggestions here? First one. Does the planning board expect to have tech, a technical memorandum, memorandum number one from the town engineer before the applicant's initial appearance before the board? I mean. I guess we should have whatever work, information or whatever he's done. Up until that point.
Well, you say that. You say that, but. We had an applicant that was recently in here. Who had a technical memorandum from Ray. And the planning board didn't have a copy of it. So. Where does that get us? So Ray works with the applicant, gives him a technical memo. That he's both, they're supposed to address. And the planning board didn't even have a copy of it, didn't know anything about it. Where'd that, where, where'd that fall through?
Let's ask. I, I guess. Before we even talk about that. Do we expect technical memorandum number one from the town engineer before an applicant's initial appearance before the board? If we don't expect it, let's not talk about why he didn't.
I think we expect, how, how are we going to address?
Tell us why you think we should expect it, and we should continue to talk about the question and not.
Could it be a technical memorandum number one generated before someone even comes to the board?
Yes. Ray should have to take a look at it.
The question is if someone has completed application, all you, but, you know. Says, you know, state statute says you come before the board once it's done, doesn't say anything about waiting for the town engineer.
The, the planning board sets up how, how it's reviewed.
Okay.
It's not the town staff. It's not the town selectmen, it's the planning board. And the plan, the planning board should have the most available information they can, they should, if the applicant comes in. Unless they come in for a conceptual review. If they're just coming in for a conceptual review, if you take a look back in history. People, the applicants used to come in for conceptual review. The planning board used to say. Have. Before they came in for their conceptual review. The planning board used to ask the, the parpads. You, Ron Beard or the fire chief. Need Hattaway. Police chief. Here's what's coming in, do you have any comments or suggestions, and then we would proceed from there. So i- if an applicant's gonna come in, I would think that we would. And, and they're gonna do something. Ray would weigh in on it with a tech, whether you call it a technical memorandum or initial, in- initial review that says. This is what the town requires. For this. Whether you, you wanna call it a technical memo or an initial. A conceptual review by the, by the town engineer. Right, or whoever it is. Says that. And does that. That gives you your basis for going forward. If the applicant decides to go forward. They then come in for site plan review. And Ray's gonna, Ray or whoever the engineer is, is gonna give. A technical memo based on that application. I mean, to me, it's not, it, it, it's not a. A big deal, I mean, it just follows. Thing, but when you've got. Applicants coming in and they're addressing a technical memo. That the board doesn't even have. That's pretty, that, that's not very good, I don't think.
Okay. All right, Cal's has her hand up for a few minutes here.
Okay, um, I believe that most um larger and more sophisticated communities. Um, they usually, the first hearing is when the, the planning board. Goes through the application to see that it's complete. And then they schedule later on. Um, the review of the application. So you don't like to do it that way, you like to go bam bam, thank you ma'am, get it all done in one shot, okay? So we. Well, no, I, I get the impatience, I understand the impatience, okay? Um, however, it's, it, it put us in a bad situation, if you'll remember. With the forty one unit fireside project. And at that time, they came in. We were expecting you to, I. Come, look at the application to see if it was complete. And instead, you went ahead and approved. It, and we hadn't even, the staff. And the engineer had not had a chance to review it. At all. So that's when we talked about having a period of time, a fifteen day period in which to review it. And at the same time, um, to see whether or not. The, we, the staff and the engineer felt that the application was complete enough to go forward. And sometime that included asking for more information. Because sometimes it wasn't there, okay, so. So that's what we were trying to do with. Doing a, a partial review or in-house review. Prior to your meeting. So. So now it seems like. Um, you're expecting kind of an accelerated. Uh. Review. So that you get to decide whether the application is complete. And then you get to decide to approve it all in, in one meeting. So I think that that's problematic in not all cases. Um, some cases it makes sense to do it that way, um. But in some of the bigger cases, um. You know, with larger subdivisions and easements and all that sort of thing. It may not be workable that way.
Okay. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, people, some people are critical about the fireside, but. We had a hearing on it, you had, had your chance to say, gee, we need more time to review it.
Well, we did say that.
Well, and remember too, that, you know. One of the things that. I've heard a comment from here from developers, people who come in, applicants, is that. You know, so we submit these, Ray submits these technical memos. And then. The applicant answers them, and then there's another technical memo with more stuff and more stuff and more stuff. Well, you know, it, but the technical memo. Should address everything. If the engineer's looking at it. Person reviewing it, it should address everything in one shot. Should be able to, if they know the rules of, and the ordinances of the town. And they know engineering and they know the, the stormwater management and all that. All of those should be identified at one time, it shouldn't be. Every time they come back, there's another technical memo and another.
Well, that's actually the second, the second question.
And I think that that. I think the discussion of the second question. To me is contingent on what the answer to the first question is.
Okay.
But it should.
No, no, the, the first question can't come back right or wrong, the first question says. Do we expect to have a technical memorandum number one from the town engineer before the applicant's initial. Appearance before the board?
Goes back to the vote we took after the fireside, basically, that they would review the applications.
And I think that it's.
Wait, are they, are they reviewing them?
For completeness, prior to coming.
For completeness, okay. For completeness, okay. So they're not looking at, at, at. They're saying that they've provided a drainage study. They have not reviewed the drainage study and looked at the depths and the size of the pipes and the number of pulver, they've not looked at all that. They've just looked, there is a drainage plan, right? So, so then they say, yes, it's complete.
Right.
Okay.
Their first technical memo.
If that's all that they're, well, the first technical memo memorandum might be that you supplied a drainage. Plan. But it's missing the lower section of the road. Okay, so, so it's not.
Just a drainage plan either of those. It's a drainage plan, the stormwater management.
All of those things.
It all has to be there the first time, because. I think that would prevent us from coming back and coming back and coming back with more technical memos. And, and then they start getting, you start getting six or eight of them. And you, you. You're sitting there going, which one are we on now?
But you're contradicting yourself. I said, you're contradicting yourself.
What do you mean?
Question number one says, does the planning board expect to have a technical memorandum number one from the town engineer? Before the applicant's initial appearance before the board. You're saying. That, yes, they should and the, the rule, the goal should be to make sure it's complete so that they don't have to keep coming back. Right? So, so the drainage plan that they submitted and the stormwater management and the road designer, da, 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 da. Is it complete? It might not be accurate. It might have mistakes. It might be missing, but did they supply all of the necessary things? Okay? That, and then, then, then.
That's whether the application is complete or not.
Complete or not. Okay?
Which is what we do now.
Okay, now. If we come back and say, uh, uh, get recommended to us that yes, they believe it's complete.
And that comes from the staff as to whether or not they have submitted it all.
Right, that's, they've submitted it. Now Ray or whoever else. The party wants or we assign it to, some third-party engineer. Reviews it.
Everything, in entirety.
Then the second technical memorandum would be, okay, this is wrong. Or needs to be changed in the stormwater management.
And I guess I would change what I told you that.
Okay.
The first, there does need to be a first technical memorandum. Until after the application has been deemed complete. Okay, because then. All of the items that are on that application. Should be being addressed by whomever you. We have to review those. At that point, everything should be reviewed. It shouldn't be coming back with eight different technical memorandums every time it. It's back at, oh, well, now I found this and now I found that. And that's. If you take a look at most of our applications, we have a lot of technical memos. You know, I mean, they just keep growing sometimes. There's no reason why the first technical memorandum can't address all the issues.
Well, the board might add stuff in between, so.
We might, we might say we would like you to do a, a traffic study and that, that, that's not on this thing or something like that. That's right.
Yeah.
Those, those would be additional. But that first technical memo should address everything except for what the board adds on to at the meetings.
Okay, the first technical memo after it's accepted as a complete application.
And, and, and in order, let's be clear, in order for it to be. Accepted as a completed application, all the information has to be submitted that's checked off.
Okay, so. After, so have to come before the board first. So that you answer that question is no, because. Board, only the board can accept it as complete.
Right. And we go down through the checklist. Yep, they submitted their wetland plan, they submitted this, they've got all those. And they submit all that. We take that nice little package. The staff does. And they send it to whoever we're reviewing it to be checked against whether it meets the town ordinances. Or whether it meets the right flows for the stormwater management, or whether it meets the right radiuses for a. Fire truck to go around. They do all of that. After they get that packet of information and it, it shouldn't be. Coming back for another one and another one and another one. It just shouldn't happen.
Okay, Cal has her hand up again.
Okay, so one of the difficulties, and Ray has talked to us about this, is he submits technical memorandum number one. Okay, so it has thirty things on it. They address six of them. That is when technical memorandum comes note, out. And says, well, you've addressed these six, but what about all the other ones?
Okay, well, as long as the number is shrinking.
I disagree. If, if.
Well, I guess you have.
That's gonna delay this whole process.
Your technical memorandum number one has thirty things. I'm just using Cal's numbers.
Yeah.
And they only address six of them, so then the next one should have twenty-four on it. Not thirty-two.
Right.
I don't think that they come back in unless they get all thirty. Because I'll tell you what, that's what makes this process go so long. The onus is on, we're hiring an engineer for someone to review this and they come up with thirty things. That applicant should have to identify and submit that, all that information for those thirty things. Before they, before, can you let me finish? Before they move on. And if they don't, we don't meet on it. Say, look, when you got them all, when you got all thirty, we'll meet. Period. Because what we end up doing is meeting, dragging it on, meeting, dragging it on, other technical memorandum, drag it on. Get it all done at once. What? It holds up everything to do that. We, we're asking for information. They're supplying the information. You know, and, and, and if Ray makes a technical memorandum that says. Out of it, that's got sixty items on this technical memo, they have to address those six things before they come back in. To let them come in piecemeal? Just convoluted.
Okay, so, so I think the problem, if I may, I think the problem is, is, you know. They come in, say it's, today's the ninth, the next meeting's on the twenty-fourth. So, you know, they're here on the ninth. You know, they, we have this list. Oh, no, no, we want to get back in on the twenty-fourth. So realistically. On a big project, it should be thirty days, because let's face it, these engineers. They come in, the, the, the client that they're here with is not their only client.
So, but, but if you told them that they have to. If you.
Commodating them or they're accommodating us?
That's right.
Right.
What we should be doing is saying. You have to have all that information all at once, folks, and then you can come back in, we'll put you on the agenda. That puts, that puts them, the onus on them.
Okay, but in order to continue with public hearing, it has to be state-specific, otherwise you have to re-notice the abuddars, so.
While they import, while then. They better, they, they better get going and they better get their information. And if they need to hire two engineers or whatever to, to get the information done, then that's what they'll have to do if they want to do these big projects.
Who's they now? Are you talking about the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether it's the applicant or not, it's the same, same with the town. I mean, if we want to meet schedules, if they want us. You know, uh. Then we have to, we have to adopt. Adapt to it, but I mean, I'm telling you.
I'm saying, if we spread it out, you know, make them skip. Go to meetings, like, you know, have them skip a meeting. You know, they could theoretically get it done in two weeks and then. Our third-party engineer could take two weeks to review it, then we'd have it for that second meeting.
But you know what happens? The same thing has happened now.
Yeah.
They don't, they say, well, we can only get two of these because someone didn't do this, someone didn't do that, or we couldn't get this information, or. That guy wasn't available. And then it just drags it all out. Just tell them. Just tell them, hey, look, bring it all in. And it, but it takes a hell of a lot of burden off the staff. They say, hey, look, it has to be complete. This is what the planning board said you needed. This is what the technical memo said you needed. Bring it all in and we'll act on it as an application. Where we screw up is we, we're acting on it halfway through and carrying it all on.
So. I guess if someone brings in an application. You don't care if it takes two months before it comes before the board.
Again, no, as long, as long as they've got the information and as long as, as long as Ray. Or whoever has looked at it.
I think, you know, I think you're running against state statute, because basically it says if there's enough information for the board to have a hearing, there's a deadline. For us to have a hearing. Doesn't say you have to wait. You, you don't have the hearing after all the technical.
Actually, you are a hundred percent right. It, it does say. It does say that if you're waiting for a permit. I- if it's permit condition that you, that you must, you can move on, but other than that.
The statute with me, but it.
I might have it somewhere.
It is strict, quite deadlines to get someone on the agenda.
Yep.
Right, so I mean, for us to have someone sit. Make an applicant wait, you know, go through tech, ten technical memorandums. I don't think that's gonna fly. Do you have any other thoughts about that?
Well. The onus is on them to get it done, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I know we were kicking around an awful lot of stuff with different clients or applicants, I should say, and. I don't know whether it made us look bad that it kept dragging and dragging.
Yeah, well, I mean, the thing is, it's two weeks in, we all.
Right, right.
So I think.
But even, even if we did, they bring in the thirty items and, and answers are there. And then we start going through them and then we start having questions again. And now, okay, well, we gotta check this out and we gotta check that out. And out of the thirty, we got, I don't know, say twelve questions that now they gotta go get answers to and then come back again, right?
Well, so we, we, at least we're.
Oh, no, 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 that's what I'm saying. So no matter, as much as we want to. You know, keep everything neat and clean, there's still gonna be. Um, timeframes because questions are still gonna come up and.
We're not gonna get these big projects in and out of one meeting.
No, no, absolutely not.
But I mean, you know, you have them here, you have input from the abuddars, they, you know, they tell us where to look and. You know, they give.
Right, well, no, that's what I'm just saying, no matter how much you try to, to streamline it. Because I, I just know there's always gonna be questions and what we're gonna try to do, like Paul said. Have as much information at the first crack at it. And this way, it doesn't make us look like we're dragging our feet. You know, it makes it say, if you don't have your stuff, then don't come here until you do. So that's why, I mean, I agree with, with Paul on getting everything brought forward. But then.
Yes, the other, the other thing is no one knows what everything is until they come.
Correct, that's, that's what I'm saying. So there still is, but the thing is, is I, I hate saying, but we don't look like the bad guys either on this.
Yeah.
You know?
Sir. Um. Two points. One is, is the idea of including everything in the first technical memorandum. Carol, I understand what you're saying. You give them thirty items, they answer six, they got twenty-four left. Okay? What Paul has been talking about, what I've also been hearing, is that you start with thirty items. They complete six, so there's twenty-four left, but then. Something that wasn't mentioned at all in the first technical memorandum is added, and then something else and something else. So now you're twenty-nine, but there's three things on there. That. Were in the original plans that were looked at. Were never responded to or questioned or whatever, and, and then. It's, it's the same item that was in there, but now it's a new question or new, new.
Right.
Issue.
Before I go into my second one, let's, let's finish conversation on that.
Carol, go ahead.
Well, I, I think what you're not thinking about is that there's a lot of give and take between. Technical, it's not like Ray just goes through, does technical memorandum, sends it. Um, over. There's a lot of conversation between him and the engineer for the other, and the applicant, so. You know, it could be that, you know, they're reviewing it, he has technical memorandum. And they, and they decide, oh yeah, we can't have a landlocked parcel here. Um, and so. So what do you want to do? You. You know, talk about option A, option B, and then. As part of that discussion, then they come up with a couple of other things that need to be on there. You know, it's not. Uh, uh, I think you're missing that whole process.
One of the other things, if I quickly. Is that if it, when you look at RSA six seventy-four, and, and I'll read this to you, it talks about design and review phase. It says the board or it's designated, in this case, that would be the technical review committee. May engage in non-binding discussions with the applicant beyond conceptual and general discussions, which involve more specific design. And engineering details, provided however. That the design review phase may proceed only after identification of and notice to a butters. Holders of, so.
I mean, design review is basically conceptual, you notice the abuddars.
When, when the technical review team's meeting, it's supposed to be noticed. Abuddars are supposed to have notice. Um, technical review team meetings, the way I, the way I read that RSA.
But I think the technical review team is doing administrative duties, so it's not.
But they are.
They're not making anything.
No, but.
Decisions that would affect the abuddars, because we'd have a public hearing and what the technical review team.
But it's design, it's all part of design and review. And I'm telling you, I think you're supposed to, I think you're supposed to notify the butters that, okay, Ray's gonna be here. South Peak's gonna be here, the technical review team's gonna meet, and we're gonna be discussing a property that you bought. So if they, I, I believe you're supposed to do that.
So that's, that's kind of getting up the subject here.
No, no, well, no, I, I'm just saying.
Review team is just the next step up from conceptual with. You, it's conceptual, but you notify the abuddars and the board has a hearing in public.
To me, design and review should be all, all about that, the, the aspects of why you're hiring an engineer. To review the whole project so that he can advise the board. Of what's missing, what's not.
Why would we?
So, so, so going back to that. You're correct. That if they, if something comes up in the technical review number one that says you need to change this driveway or move this, so. Then they come back and say, okay, we moved the driveway, um, and, but now Ray finds that, well, when they moved the driveway, that messed up the stormwater drain. Or it's not set back or what, whatever. Obviously, those aren't new. Things that were on the original plan. They're new things that were on the revised plan. So, so. It always won't be a hard number. It won't be thirty minus six equals twenty-four. Because if you get down to the twenty-four and that plan. Needs, that new plan needs changes. To me, those aren't, aren't the same things, same plan that you, you're adding to.
If I could.
But that, that.
If I could add to your comment though, old Jay, is that. That's, that's why I. I think we need to look at other engineering. Aspects, opportunities, or whatever you want to call it. See how they might suggest that.
Just listen, and there's, there's two components here, so I think.
What, what are you guys saying then? Um. I'm not understanding what, should we do bits and pieces or should we bring in all one load and then work off of that?
So they mean the technical review takes place outside of the planet. That's an administrative issue.
Right.
So I think, you know, the issue is, is a tech, you know, technical memorandum, the rate is, oh geez, I forgot about propane tanks. It's on there.
Okay.
Remember when Sadi came in to buy a new product one time?
Yeah.
We made, we had a quick set of blueprints. And. When Sadi came in. With five different projects. Food and Bradgate coming in, and Mansion Hill coming in all at the same time. I mean, everybody bring this full set of blueprints in. Uh, they thought it was complete, and we go over to the planning board, they make them take it back. To correct any errors they wanted to. Then we go to engineering, settle. It's a lot quicker for process. But now again, what if and or the. We're getting backlog like you wouldn't believe.
The, the other. Thing I wanted to, to bring up is, is. Having everything solved before it comes back to the planning board, the technical memorandums. In theory is a good idea. But if we look at, say, the Mansion Hill case. Okay, with, with, they came in. And, I mean, I don't know how many meetings we had with them, but every time they left here. They had to change their plan. Okay, because we didn't like the design of the, of the lot cut out. We thought there's, there was too many lots, there was. I, I mean, they came back, every time they came back, it was a different plan. Now, if we said you have to get everything down on the technical memorandum on the first plan, then we have to come back. They get a second plan, they gotta redo all those things, I mean.
But you know, Mansion Hills, a lot of those meetings, they were counting, it's walking about, they, they came in voluntarily as conceptual. They were counting that as has happened a hearing and they were like using it against.
That's true, that's true.
We'd make a comment and they'd come back with another concept, and that was their call.
And they did a good job with it. They, they went from whatever, thirty something.
They were trying to accommodate people.
Right.
Yeah, they, they developed.
Took a lot of the stuff, I mean, that was a good process. I just don't know if, if, if we had said, we're not gonna have you back in engineering, answer everything on technical memorandum number one. When they knew that, that, that some of those things we. Pointed out weren't gonna exist because they changed the road design. They changed the lot design, they changed.
How about if we at least say. Or work towards. Something that says. Anything that all. Prior technical memorandum items have to be. The information has to be in and be addressed. Prior to having another meeting, so that we can at least get those things off of the table. So, because what happens is.
You have one meeting.
Oh, this one, three of these things, it's all two of those. Oh, this one, three of these things, it's all, two of those didn't get solved from the technical memorandum of six. Uh, three didn't get solved from technical memorandum number two. Oh, I mean, you know, we we've got to find a way to.
But you didn't understand what I said. What if three of those things that didn't get solved were no longer on the plan? Or had got changed in the plan? So so Ray's issue with.
Doesn't that create a whole new set of technical?
Okay, okay, so they didn't solve it. They didn't solve this drain because it got moved up to here. Now Ray needs to look at this drain, but they don't need to solve that drain.
So that's not, that's not something that anyone did wrong, the developer.
And 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 that comes off of the the other list, but at least we're, what what's happening is is these technical memo. Memos and the lists continue to grow, and the technical memos continue to grow because. We, I I think we're allowing them to, and and that's where we need, that's where we need help someone, because. I think it's, well, Ray or something, well, now, wait a minute, I mean, you know, I just heard Carol say that Ray, Ray told us about something before. So Ray will comment when he, when he wants to comment, but, you know, I mean, I I, that's why I think we need to. At least see what other engineers say, because they make.
You're splitting this two, you know, we're first, we're kinda going through Karina's list.
Well, I know that, but it brings up both Jimmy.
This and think about it, and we can vote on sending out this, it's up to you.
I think we ought to send it out, I think we ought to continue to to work on Karina's list, because we owe her that, because she made it. But I think we ought to send that out to see what, you know, because we're gonna create. We've got some questions already about how technical memos can be streamlined or or how how we can get them answered faster. Ray might have some answers, but let's find out if there's anybody else that has some answers to.
Project is complete, it's already happened, so, you know, the engineer that worked on it, like in another town, can say, well, I worked on this project, and he's free to share everything, because it's. It's already happened, you can't discuss a pending application, but once that application's been decided on, you know, they're free to talk about it. So they could share what they did, well, this is what we did the first memorandum, and then just learn how they, what their process was, how they arrived. How they got to the finish line.
Well, I'd say we send that out, I gotta tell you, that's what we voted on. I think what Karina came up with is fine. I'd send that out, but, you know, and and the meetings, I think we should keep working on.
So I mean, I think, you know, I'd like to kinda work, work through these two issues, we're still on question one here for bullet points.
Yeah, we're never gonna.
So.
We'll be midnight.
I'm gonna agree with Paul in that we should get some input on this, but I'm gonna suggest specifically from Ray, who has been through this process. A hundred times with this planning board.
Well, we can get it from him too, but I think we ought to go with, I I think we'll take a look, broaden our horizons and take a look and see what else.
Fine, send out the RFP, but let's let's take these questions seriously and get Ray's input and and address them, so would we talk. Engineering company number one and number two and number three, we can tell them. What our, what our process is and how they fit into that, and do they have any improvements on that?
And and I'm sure Ray gets frustrated with all these technical memorandums too. You know, I I I gotta imagine that he probably pulls his hair off sometimes thinking, what if I forget something from technical memo numbers?
You guys get your engineering license sometime.
We all say that about each other.
Okay, so let's. But I think right now we need more information, but I think, I think the biggest thing is we're allowing them to come back at the next meeting as as opposed to waiting.
So, right, so one of the things we were supposed to do was to review that.
I mean, I, I.
RFP, and 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 I'd make a motion that we send out the RFP as Karina has.
Okay, so let's, this one's dated October thirty-first, so do you wanna make it?
That's the only one she she submitted.
What date do you wanna put? Do you wanna put December fifteenth? Do you wanna put November thirtieth?
What's today?
Say November thirtieth.
Remember Hampton Inn, they come back every two weeks with all the same stuff.
Well, it says under contract.
What's that?
Says under contract by November thirty-one, let me see here. Says here. Okay, so she used October one to get the proposal in, and then October thirty-first to um. To be under contract, so let's put December first to have into submissions.
Right.
And then December thirty-first for dead, for a minute for a decision, like we'll respond back to the applicants.
I I wouldn't say a decision, I would say we will respond back by December thirty-first. And that the response can be, you know what, we're happy with what we got, or, yeah, we're interested in what you have to sell.
Okay, let's work on this here. Seal statements of qualification shall contain one original and five copies of requested information and will be received until four thirty PM on December first, twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
Okay, and then it goes on to towns, okay. And the other question is, so it says the town expects a select an engineer in firm to be under contract by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, I would.
I would take that out.
Well, I think these guys are gonna probably wanna know when they get an answer, so.
But but that says you, you expect the contract, and we're not.
We're not, we don't know if it's gonna make a contract.
That's right, so I would take that out.
I don't have an issue with that, like I said, we're only looking what's out there.
Well, that's true.
So, does anyone have any other objections taking that out? Right, just take that out. All right, so let's put this out with the two changes. Your motion?
I'll make a motion, put that out with two changes.
There a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
You put an abstain, so three a's and two abstentions, no nay votes. Okay, that's fine, all right.
So what was the final vote?
Uh, Paul, Steve and myself voted yes, OJ and Joe abstained, and no one voted no. We're gonna send out the request for proposals, we're gonna take out the line. It says the town expects a select an engineering firm to be under contract by October thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, so that's out in its entirety. And then we're putting the deadline for submission, we're gonna take submissions up till December one, twenty twenty-four. So those two changes, I don't, I'm assuming we're gonna put it out on our website. Right, we'll know. Won't know unless we try. I mean, where do we usually put our requests for proposals? Do they like a lot on the website?
No, they would go.
Like any other request for proposal should be in the same venues.
Yep, New Hampshire Municipal would be a good, one good place to put it out.
Okay, and regarding Karina's comments, is this something we wanna have at a subsequent meeting, discuss it further?
I think we do.
Okay, I think we do and wanna invite Ray.
That's fine.
I mean, I think Karina, I I I think you could send these to Ray. And, you know, if if apparently everyone thinks we have to ask Ray for stuff, I think we could, why not send these to Ray? From saying Karina's brought these up, and questions up, and we'd like your response still.
I I think something like this, discussion and question and answer. Would be very beneficial to the board, to me.
Oh, no, no, I I couldn't disagree, I couldn't agree with you more. But I, but I'd like to have Ray's response, that we can formulate our questions maybe before we have that meeting. So let Ray respond, then Ray can show up on the meeting, and if we have questions, at least we can write them down and not try and. Go through them that night, because that's what makes the meetings long, if we can at least take a look at it, it it's a lot easier.
One could just lengthen in another, yeah, I I.
Wait a minute, if 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 you send Karina's, you send Karina's thing to Ray. And he responds, and you give it, give his responses to all of us, at least then if we have any questions for Ray about his responses. Then we can have that meeting and boom, 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 it goes through it, but if we're sitting there talking about it like we're talking tonight, we're gonna be. Be another midnight, just getting through probably the first question, so why not at least have a little review?
So, so send this off to Ray and see if he wants to comment on it, and tell him we're gonna discuss it as subsequent.
Yeah, and we're gonna invite him to the discussion for sure.
Yeah.
All right, I would invite, do what you said, invite him to respond in writing if he wants before the meeting.
Right.
But I think some of these, like, like, like question two depends on the answer to number one.
Right, but there aren't too many questions, or rest are just like examples, so they don't really need any comment from us, I mean, they. She's just giving us, like, putting ideas in our head.
But Ray may have some responses to these, in fairness, right, he may, he may have some responses to these, and I'd like to see what his responses are. A- and then if I have any questions, I can, I can write them down instead of just, when we have a meeting. And Ray's here, and we're all just going at it, it makes it last longer, but if we have a chance to review it first, and maybe jot down any questions we have, it seems to go a little quicker. That's all I'm saying.
So we invite him to the meeting.
Yep.
Send him the questions and invite him to answer any of these beforehand.
Yep.
Right.
Wants to, so let's do the first meeting in November for this.
That's.
I'll tell, tell them that's our goal, is to have them for the first meeting in November.
Lot of things in life, you have to slow down a little bit to speed up.
Yeah.
Really.
The only thing else we need to discuss is more discussion on the land use permit fee increases, not on the agenda.
It was, it was supposed to be on the agenda. You need an answer of that, OJ, like, from us?
I would say that we don't need one tonight, okay, I mean, this is nothing that the board is gonna act on. Like immediately, we're not changing them, we're not trying to do this by November first, it's all, okay, with. Thinking that.
Put on the next agenda?
Yeah, I mean, because if if we wanna get this, like, effective January first. We need to answer, you know, we need input from the planning board, and then I believe we have to have a hearing on. Changes of the. Administrator.
I don't think you need, I mean, I appreciate you asking our input, but.
Okay.
Technically, it's your policy.
Administrator, you guys are the one that assigned the.
What's what's on the agenda in two weeks? Oh, I'm not gonna be here in two weeks.
Okay.
Safe travels.
What, did did we get a copy of what the increases were being proposed?
No, he wasn't here.
Okay, then you didn't get it, okay.
Carol, can I have a cup? Where where's it come from?
I don't, I don't.
I'll look around, see.
I'm sorry, twenty-third's the next meeting.
I'll be here, okay.
Are there anything else on that agenda next meeting that?
Not yet.
Okay, then let's, let's put the plan, um.
Yeah.
Fees.
Fees on.
Okay.
How can I get a copy of those?
We'll have to ask Karina.
But you didn't have a copy.
I have a copy somewhere, I'll.
Karina has it all to Sascar, I guess.
Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, Joe has a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Joe. I didn't.
Haven't heard anything.
On the water shower?
Don't ask, it's a long story.
Not good news. The. Not good news, the Forest Service, um. And has basically determined that the, um. Our original plan that we submitted to even start the process was a pretty direct route up to the water tower, uh, proposed site of the water tank. And it it, um, covered one point six. My acres of forest land, forest serves land, plus some some other land on, um, South Peak. After that process began, and we looked, not we, the Forest Service looked at water land, oh. Wetlands and and animals and slope and everything else. Different geologists, hydrologists, birdologists, people wanted it. Relocated, redone, or whatever.
The road going up to it, right?
And and the location of the tank, they thought the tank would be better sighted over here, and our position was. We're fine with that, you know, we don't, we don't care where the tank is, we propose this just to start the discussion. Long story short, by the time we got to the final plan, that was like agreed upon. The road went further out this way, the tank went further this way, we're now occupying or disturbing or. Three acres Forest Service land. The NEPA review, which is the required, um, uh, studies. That the Forest Service has to have us do, and it because of the grant and the funding and, um, of all the. Regulations, I guess, regarding Forest Service land, um, because that increased from one point six to three acres. They've now determined that we have to start all over, like where we were over a year ago, and redo all the studies of the whole three acres. And not just the one point six.
But there's two different studies, right?
So I mean, the studies that have been done so far are invalid, basically, start over.
They're not, they're not expansive enough.
They don't cover the same, all all the property, it was one point six instead of the three.
So so each study, it's not that it's not valid, it's not as inclusive, so the wetland study that they did, they covered this.
They don't know there's any on the additional.
They don't know if there's any over this side, that's now part of it.
Or maybe there's a different animal over there.
Or or archaeological relics or.
So which study are they gonna do on it?
Well.
Find out yet?
There's two types of studies that they can require, what they required for the one point six acres was a, a briefer. Review. The study that they're gonna require for the full three acres has yet to be determined, we're hoping that it's also the briefer one. But, um, until.
When are they gonna decide that?
Not until we tell them whether we're going forward with it or not.
Well, you can't tell them that till.
Till South Peak, um, the agreement we have with South Peak. Um, is is expiring, okay, and. They need to agree to extend that if we're gonna continue with this, okay, they have the right for the agreement to say. We, you know, we're not gonna wait, we're gonna build our smaller lower tank and move on.
Have you found out about the, um. Grant, whether it can be extended or?
We've, is the, um, Northern Board is grant, it's a matching grant, a million dollars, so we put in five hundred, they put in five hundred. Um, we have inquired and we got back, um, an initial reaction, but not an official response. And the reaction was, it is, we have to make the application, we have to detail that it, we have to go through all the hoops. But the initial response is, um, that. Most of the things are are in our favor to get a, um. Extension, but it's not guaranteed.
That always worries me, because it's just like the Forest Service, they said everything looked great, you know, and then all of a sudden, now, here you are.
That's why they don't give us a response, because we gotta fill out thing and it gotta go to whatever level and and see if it comes back, so it's.
We go back to square one and offer like I suggested, swap some South Beach land and Forest land to put it on.
Same thing, the same thing.
Not as, not as critical. Right over here, took about two months.
Okay.
Well, they are, you're already deep into it, but, uh.
You know, it takes them like two hundred bucks to write a thirty-five dollar check.
So what, what's the next question, you got another question, Joe?
Does.
What, how tall is that radio tower at the, at the police station?
The one going up ninety-three, one of the side, yeah.
Too tall according to most people.
I've heard a lot about that, but I.
We, we just got that to plan.
I mean, as far as like a blinking light, so.
Hundred feet, wasn't it? You had to get a very, very institute a hundred.
No, they don't have to, they don't have to do anything down.
It's not, it's not subject to the land use ordinance.
Second question is, this is not current right now, but it will be, right now, all the store coming out of South Peak, that's our little mall. Up to a four inch, four main, coming down, that's all the stores, now you put another eight hundred units in. Doesn't happen, that whole side of the mountain can be shut down, do we have any contingency in the future? Take care of it.
We have one inch line. I'm unaware of the premise and un-unaware or not aware of the answer to that question.
Now, I'm just saying, something we should look into over a period of years, because the role of the planning board is long-term planning, not just short-term planning. We are gonna need more water, so like to pass come across, or they can put another plant across the river.
So that's.
No, I think that that was.
I think that's.
Pump station was designed, the one that's, the sewer pump station that's in back of, uh, here.
That's four inch.
Down, yes, on on the other side, I know, but I don't think it's four inch, I think it's bigger than four inch.
The original plant is a four inch.
There was, and, and Dunn you put that, they put that in along with the water line going across, was it Dunn you or was it Collins? They built that, they built that pump station on, on the South Mountain parking lot, you know, where it goes right down over there, yeah.
Okay, this question will find.
So there's more, there's not all the store over there is going through that one inch, that four inch force main, that's.
Most of it is.
Okay.
The stuff that comes down, there used to be a pump station, um, right where the maintenance building is, and I thought they got rid of that, but I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I thought they'd get rid of that when I put it, it all goes down into that one now, gravity feeds down into there.
Except, I'm not trying to cause any trouble, but we can look into the future and make sure that to be catastrophic.
I think that, when that was designed, this, like, the whole thing was designed, that, that was designed for that.
What year was it put in?
Why, too late for me to give you a year.
It'd be a whole lot of digging.
I was, yeah, I mean, when they did that, which, I used to take care of that pump station, it used to come from Westwood.
All right.
Came from Westwood.
Do you want to have anything else?
Let's do adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
I'm taking my.
Yeah, going out partying, big dance, listen to a band.